You're already doing that.
Before we get started, though, Chris did want to make a motion and see if the council wanted to move with this. So, Chris, if you wanted to...
Yeah, I would recommend that we take item number five and six, sole source, pack, water, storage, tank, mixer. Same thing with caterpillar compactor and front end loader. I think Mr. Beamer did a fine job justifying that in the documentation that we all had beforehand to read. I don't think it needs discussion, and I recommend we pass it.
How does everybody feel about that?
What's the rea-- what, you're just thinking because you read it, you know, not...
That's exactly what I'm thinking. See, what happens is people take ideas and put them in a combination of letters and words. Comes out as a document.
And this bothers you?
No, I like it.
All that bothers you is then having to hear, have him read it to you.
I don't need him to read it to me. He doesn't, and he doesn't want to either.
Cool. I think that's worth it. Thanks, Chris.
The only thing I think about those, I agree with, I agree with what you're saying, but sometimes the discussion, there are constituents listening, like to hear the explanation because they don't read all of it.
And I would suggest, too, if we can look at it, and if constituents have concerns or issues about those items, they can contact us.
But he could probably do a five minute press.
It could be full of the agenda, but we actually approve it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, introduction, Mr. Pete Fazio. Somebody gonna introduce you, Pete, or...
Mr. Fazio here has recently applied to re-up his position, I believe it is, on the DDA board. And pursuant to council's interest to at least see the individual once before your appointment goes into effect, which in this case would be on the third, Mr. Fazio is available this evening, and we had him come. And that really is all, all that we need is just to make sure that you have the opportunity to say hello and that kind of...
I see him on Sundays when I go in there for breakfast, so I'm good.
I'm sure he appreciates that, yeah, you bet.
Pete, we appreciate you coming in. I think everybody knows you're pretty good, and we appreciate your support for the downtown development and everything you have done the last several years with your business and everything, so...
And that was a great chicken fried steak I had. God, that was good. That gravy was fantastic. I couldn't believe it. That was really excellent. I'd never had it before.
Does anybody have any questions for Pete or anything like that? I'd have to put Pete on the spot. He's been on the DDA before, so...
Anything for us? I guess being invested in downtown, you know, this is a tough decision for me, to be honest with you, because there's been some decisions, I think, and not that I think the DDA has to maybe be involved in all the decisions, but there's been some decisions made downtown that made me think whether I wanted to actually do this again or not. But after seeing David Street Station, I think, and with the help of the city council, we've got something successful. But there's been a couple of decisions that have been made that really have hindered what we can do in downtown. And I would just ask and hope that maybe there's some input from the DDA, especially if city council is going to approve an individual sits on the board. I mean, as a business owner, my time, I'm willing to invest my time and my efforts into something to see a better good. But when there's decisions made that the DDA maybe would like to see, just have some input in, and that doesn't happen, it makes me sometimes question whether my time and effort could be spent more on my business and other, other things. And that's all I ask, is that maybe there's some open dialogue and discussion with projects that potentially could happen downtown. And again, not for any approval, but potentially for our insights of the DDA work. That's it.
Well, thank you for volunteering.
Thanks, Pete. We appreciate it.
But I appreciate, I mean, I think downtown's without the council, again, I think David Street Station has proven itself. If anyone was down at DUW, Pepper Alley, I mean, that was just amazing. I think they've done some amazing things down there, and I'd like to see it continue.
My condolences.
Next time you won't get chicken fried steak.
Thanks, Pete. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Audit review. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council's aware that an effort has been underway over the last several months that would include a review with the finance team at the event center pertaining to some of the shortcomings that was experienced in the last nine or more months up there. And we have our team here this evening to answer any questions that you may have pursuant to the memo and the review that you received in your packets recently. I was pleased to learn that the audit team is comfortable with regard to the progress that has been made. I was further encouraged by the idea that they did not detect or pick up or find anything by way of a criminal nature either in their review. And so for those two points, I felt relatively satisfied. If you would prefer, we have Mr. Pitlick here this evening, and we have members of our auditing firm here as well, as well as the financial manager from the event center to visit with you with regard to whatever questions or discussion you'd like to have this evening. Chris?
Thanks. I guess whoever it's most appropriate to, I, maybe Tom, one, I read the memo on there, and then I see the closing events and that kind of thing where I'm always supposed to be looking at them. Is that standard? Is that still a problem when I'm seated? I don't know enough to tell you if it's good or bad.
I should get my man. I would like to have Cindy and Kenneth from the Portobere. Yeah, you just go through. I mean, you gotta go over what you looked at and what the review, what the review entailed, and answer all the questions that you have.
Thank you for having me. I do want to reiterate that it wasn't an audit. It was more of an agreed upon procedure. So I think I want to clarify the different, what we did. We were given a list of procedures to look at and see if things were going okay. And that's what we tested. So if you're looking at your, the report that we gave you, that closing events, so what we did is we looked at all the events that have happened at the event center from July 1st through April 1st was our, or March 31st was our deadline. And based on that, we saw if the activity or the event had been closed out as far as all the expenses, all the revenue had been closed out for that activity. And what we found is on page two of your fund results, that we tested 55 events that occurred from that April 1st. Thirty-four had been closed, properly closed. Of the 20 events that were still lingering that had not been closed, eight occurred in March, which would make sense because we just had, just left there. Five events occurred in March and February, one occurred in January, and six occurred in the months of July, July through December of 2017. And one event had, was from the prior year. And those were our results. So as far as you're looking at a conclusion, you can see that the ones that there has been some closure, there are some lingering activity from, but they're still working towards cleaning up. And that, those are as far as the activities go. The next event that you had us looking at was the accounting for the events, is if there were events that were being properly documented and closed, and how the information was being provided into your general ledger. That general ledger is the information that you're providing the finance offices how, is there, how the numbers are calculated. And as you can see, we selected two events prior to Jennifer Dixon, who started, and how those, how those were documented, and after her start of employment. And you can see that there was some difficulty finding information prior to her arrival. And afterwards, there, we were able to find most of the documentation. So there is the improvement of that. The other activity we looked at is the sponsorship and advertising contracts. They saw a lot of contracts for advertising, and if that's being properly accounted for. What we did find is that everything was pretty well documented. They worked really hard to get that calculated properly in their, in their books. And that is what the sponsorship was, the 3% food and beverage fee. We just recalculated three months, or two months, October and February, to make sure the documentation was correct, and the 3% that they're, they're supposed to be calculating was done, and that was done properly as well. The big thing we have is unexpected directional balances. And that is more of an accounting area where if you pay payroll, do payroll expenses, it should have a debit balance in your financial statements. If you have a credit, it's an odd thing. Same thing, if you get revenue, it should be a credit bal, a credit balance, not a debit balance. So the problem is on page five and six, we have a list of all the accounts that have an incorrect directional. These accounts need to be cleaned up. These accounts have something, either by the name, is being incorrectly used, or the account a number. And that is something that corporate, and they're gonna have to work through to get those cleaned up. And those are the list on page five and six. It's probably one of our biggest concerns, is we have people using accounts not, not incorrectly. Cash counts, we went through the cash counts. We checked January, February, March, to make sure that the ATM, the box office, the finance, and the food and beverage counts were done correctly. They were being recorded. I think the only area of concern we had was there wasn't two people signing off on that, and that was recommendations we had. The bank reconciliations, we had some, we looked at August, December, and February on page seven, and looked at those bank records to see that they were completed. We were not able to find August at the time we were there, but they have since found them, and December and February. We did have some areas that, there were some items that were not, that should not be on the reconciliation and required cleanup. And that, too, was communicated to them as well. So as far as tying numbers to anything as far as an audit would go, we did not, these are the exact steps we did, the transactions that we looked at and the results of that.
Questions? Dallas?
So when you say clean something up, what do you mean by that?
That means someone needs to look into it. There's something being posted into an account that shouldn't be, shouldn't be in there. There needs some investigation.
So you don't, you don't know what the cause of it is, or whether money's getting into the right place?
Nope.
You can't tell us here whether money has been diverted?
No, not. That is, all we did was we looked to see what your accounts for debits and credits, and that was the process for this agreed upon procedure.
So when you have a client that loses a million dollars a year, what do you usually tell them in a business?
Well, then we'd be looking at where they're spending their money and how that's being accounted, because there's, a million dollars is a lot of money to be losing. And there's a lot of different ways that it could be accounted for differently.
Have you done that here?
Well, I know what, as far as the event center, I know that there's, because the event center is, was under your pooled cash system, under your recreation fund, there are different pools of money. It's one pool of money. And you're gonna be borrowing from one to the other. And at the end, it could be all a million dollars, you could have a million dollars, but one could be in the hole a million dollars because they're borrowing from it. And that's differently, how it, how your account structure looks here.
So an audit, this, this is mis, you said this is incorrectly stated on our agenda as an audit. So tell me what the difference between what you did is in an audit.
Well, agreed upon procedures were a list of procedures you agreed that we needed to look at. That's all we did. I didn't, we didn't look to see if they, if they were stealing money or anything like that, nor that would an audit do that as well. An audit is going to agree your numbers. You're gonna say so much money is in your bank account, we're gonna see a bank reconciliation, we're gonna tie that to supporting documentation. Pretty much everything on your balance sheet is supported by documentation. And that's the difference between an audit and agreed upon procedures.
So I don't know why we didn't request an audit. Maybe the manager can explain that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, in my opinion, an audit is a review. And where the accountant will tell you, an audit in her world means a variety of different things, and a different set of processes and procedures and reviews and that kind of thing. At the end of the day, what we've asked them to do is go forward and review what it is that we found problematic, deviewed problematic, and see if indeed they're making progress. We did not ask for a full audit, in that we will have a full audit coming up here later on. And if we had asked for a full audit, I would expect that we would incur the bill of asking for an additional full audit. However, in the circumstance where we did want to know on an interim basis whether or not they are testing positively, I think it is appropriate to review, but I don't think it's necessary to go forward and do a full audit, in that we will be getting one here relatively soon.
As I recall, it was our direction, was to do a review before we get to the audit at the end of the year.
That's what I thought, anyway.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, will this, how do we prevent this from happening again? This problem with all these accounts and having this legacy debt and all this, that nobody knows it. How do you prevent that?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I clarify the question a little bit here? The legacy imbalance that we've talked about in recent weeks is, is different than what we asked the auditing team to do. We did not ask them to go through and identify the issues that we have with the legacy imbalances and that kind of thing. That was something that we provided information to you, separate apart from the Spectra review that this team did. And I will reemphasize again, the legacy imbalance was something that occurred and grew prior to Spectra taking on the business of the event center. So if I can just interject there, I didn't mean interrupt.
No, no, I think you clarified. This has nothing to do with that. This was completely from October 1st, they started their, the contract, and that is what we're looking at. October 1st through, is when they started. So this legacy has nothing to do, it's apples and oranges, in this, as far as this report goes.
So all of the things you were saying needed to be cleaned up, our Spectra's problem?
Yeah, that was from their business. What we happened is they had an audit report last year. And at the end, we gave them a recommendation letter of these areas that needed to be worked on. And this is what, how these procedures were created from.
And they didn't do it?
They did, they had, no, they did. They started implementing all these changes, and that's where Jessica comes in to start cleaning up. She saw the letter, changing all the areas. Therefore, the city hired us to go back in and check all the things that we had recommended they start doing, had they started, had they been implemented, which is a result of this.
Jesse, and then Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't really for Cindy, I don't think, maybe the city manager. So the $10,000 that we paid to have this review done, that Portobere had conducted, will we have to do that again? And are we going to push any of that cost onto the event center, since we're basically helping out, you know, their financial team?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the review that we asked for is something that we don't hope to have to do or request again, in that it's my anticipation, and I think you would agree to, that the audit will be dramatically different in its result than what it was that we got back in January, wherein they offered an opinion that was conditioned upon, well, the reality is, it wasn't even really an opinion, because they were so concerned about what all they saw, and the inconclusive information that they were able to gather, not able to gather. I mean, it's, it's, so my hope is that you will not see that again. And so, in my opinion, if we don't see something like that, or even close to it, we shouldn't need to do another review. The other thing I wanted to state, too, is, it was my understanding that Spectra covered the cost of the review, the corporation, not the city of Casper. And so if we have to pay for another one, then that would be our first one.
Okay. So then bills and claims for Portobere Head, and then the subtitle for Casper Med Center on last week's meeting, was that in reference to this, or was it in regards to something different?
That would be this. That, I would anticipate Spectra being able to reimburse this for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Charlie, and then Bob.
I want to ask Dallas's question a little differently. Maybe you already answered this, but, so Spectra had someone running the finances who, I think we could frankly say, didn't have the necessary competencies to do the job. And this went on for quite some time before it was discovered.
Right.
Are you satisfied now that there are some procedures and oversight in place, so that if, if that problem were to occur again, and someone just didn't know how to do the job, that that would be caught and earlier dates, so we wouldn't have this run up of deficits?
Based on the results, on the dates, like, as far as I look at, I can tell a line difference between what was done before, and before Jessica took over, and their, and their processes. There's a distinct line that there, everything is documented. So I think that is a clear line that, yes, things are completely different from when, before it, someone else, before she took over.
I guess my question is just a little different from that. Are we still relying on a person who may or may not have the competencies, or are there some checks and balances, and are there some new procedures in place, so that if that person, whoever they may be, Jessica or someone else, has those problems that occurred before, that it would be caught by someone else?
She does have a staff. And I think maybe you can clarify a little bit about how the people you have in place now, to have your checks and balances as far as your operation goes.
So I do have a staff accountant that works for me, who's very competent. I am also, I'm, well, I'm that close to having my CPA license. And then above me, we also have a corporate oversight guy that works with me directly on my books. He reviews everything I do. And then above him is Sue Jordan, who is our corporate oversight that basically overlooks that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I recall the situation, we were about seven months into the contract when our staff noticed some anomalies. And that's when we engaged your organization to come in. And at that same time, that was during the process when they were hiring you, I think, and coming in to get some of these anomalies fixed. And it sounds like we've made significant progress towards doing that, since you've been engaged. So is that a fair statement?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Dallas?
So are these problems that are at the doorstep of Spectra, or at the doorstep of the city as far as causation this issue?
As far as what?
Who caused these problems?
This was, they were, it was their organization, as far as the issues that I, we went through. This was part of their process, their internal controls. They did not have the proper internal controls and the proper review to take care of these things. They have since then been corrected with staffing and probably some more monitoring of, of the activity that's going on there.
So my question is, is why should we pay the bill for anything that's caused by them? I would, I would vote to say they should pay it. I don't think we should pay it.
Sounds like they are paying it.
Well, they didn't, we paid it on the last go around with the bills and claims.
You just said that we're gonna reimburse it.
The corporate office is already, is going to be sending a bill for that, so.
For all the costs? For all the costs?
Yes.
For the, for the cost of the review?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Parking study, final presentation.
Mr. Mayor, by the way, if I queue it up a little, please. You have had an opportunity to hear and review on a number of occasions now, the parking study that has been underway for, I want to say, eight months or so. What you have in front of you, and what we are prepared to discuss this evening, is the final draft pursuant to input they've received, both from you and from members of the public, as well as sort of a follow-up to questions you had previously, and so on. So my, my expectation for tonight's delivery of information is more along, along the lines of, of follow-up, more so than rehashing what it is that you've already heard. And again, another opportunity to ask questions and clarify information that may, may still be unclear. So with that, if I could turn time over to Aaron, our consultant, that'd be great.
Just real quick, I just want to reintroduce, for those of you who haven't met, Mr. Dennis Burns with Kim Lee Horn out of Phoenix. Dennis's team has been working with us since November, and we've made a lot of progress. Last time I was in front of you was about five weeks ago. And so since then, as the city manager explained, we've done some tweaking and done some refinement. So Dennis is going to take us through that, and then we'll be happy to. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
The last time you saw me, we had just completed our community engagement trip, where we had lots of public meetings and lots of public input. And essentially, it was sort of an issues identification phase. So once we got all of that, then we really got to work on the analysis phase, and then from that, the recommendations. And that's what we're essentially presenting, only the new stuff for the most part here. So I will try to be brief, maybe if I can get this to you.
Just try turning it up.
Try turning it down. All right. There, that worked. On the other way. Okay, we don't need that. Some of you might, you might ask, where's Vanessa? Vanessa was with me the whole trip. Vanessa just had baby number two, so that's where Vanessa is, just in case you were wondering what happened to Vanessa.
We'll switch you up.
This one you might have seen before, but I thought it was important enough. This is not only your typical parking study that just looks at a lot of numbers on how many spaces you got. We really tried to look at parking being something that's more strategic in terms of helping you link parking management to the bigger picture, your community master plan, economic development, transportation. It all gets linked together in some sort of way. And so we really take a kind of a different approach to things. Again, just a reminder of the study area. We had the overall study area, and then two specific areas we wanted to focus on. This was a piece that was not completed, and so just recently, and this is what's coming down the pike in terms of prospective development sites. So you can see the different development sites listed there, and where they're located. The one thing that jumped out to me was this kind of cluster of development over here. Even with all this new development, we still don't think you need to build any, any more parking, at least not for the time being. We just think you need to manage it a little more effectively. We do think that because of all this cluster, that looking at those two parking lots and improving those lots would probably be a good thing to do, just to provide more capacity, and especially for events. But again, the overall supply situation at the peak time was still less than 50% utilized, so you don't really have a parking supply problem. Just trying to summarize some of the key findings, and one of the main issues, and how are we addressing them in this report. Again, you don't have a supply problem. We think you've got a lack of parking management problem. We need to address the on-street turnover and collections of citations. Those were two fairly significant issues. Your on-street turnover is only about two and a half times a day. We'd like to see that about five or six times a day, if we get effective enforcement. Parking transportation policy, we think needs a new organizational approach and expertise and leadership. We'll talk more about that as we go forward. Dedicating all parking revenue streams to support the parking enterprise fund. When we get into other communities where over time parking has been, and the public works has done this, finance has done this, facilities has done that, police has done that, that horizontal fragmentation of managing parking, where everybody's managing little pieces that nobody's managing at all as a system, that's kind of what we're getting to here. The other piece of that is, when the revenue streams have gotten pushed over here, and over here, and over here, it's very difficult to get them back into one place. It's important from a parking point of view to get them in one place. So you have an opportunity to kind of solve a problem that's fairly typical in other communities. Well, parking as a discipline needs, we think, a new organizational approach and a strong capable leader, so that the idea of hiring a parking manager is sort of a simple recommendation. And that really boils down to mastering the fundamentals of parking management. And as part of that overall management process, we think having a real customer service focus. Parking affects so many people every single day, millions of touches, thousands of touches at least here, that it really impacts what people think about the community and how they, how they perceive the community. Parking is already technically an enterprise fund, but we really want to dedicate all those revenues into one fund, because if the ideal here is to develop a parking management system that is essentially a self-supporting entity, and parking has the ability to do that, that parking garages won't pay for themselves. You get $150, $250 a space per month to pay for that service and operations and maintenance and maintenance reserves. But on-street parking, especially if you have meters, off-street parking and enforcement can all be positive revenue generators. If you put all that together, and eventually get a couple of garages paid off, the whole thing can be a self-supporting enterprise fund. So that's the long-range vision there. The other thing about Casper that is a little surprising is the overwhelming majority of your parking spaces that are out there are privately owned. So leveraging those underutilized private resources, so that perhaps if we have a good parking management program, we can offer to manage those spaces for... we can offer to manage those spaces for the amount of sharing, of shared revenue perspective, that that gives us the opportunity to promote shared parking. Again, just pushing off that need to build additional structure parking in the future and just making the system as efficient as possible. To achieve all the customer satisfaction goals and improved operational efficiency and financial performance and overall system management, the technology, new technologies can help you a lot there. The idea that you could come downtown to shop, have a great time, be sitting at a cafe, realizing your, your two hours is about to expire. But now if I had, if you have the new meters, you could just go on your app and extend your time without ever having to get up. The longer you stay downtown, the more money you tend to spend. So it's really just giving people what people intend, starting to expect from other communities. We think the technology piece of that's really critical. Over time, we'd like to see the parking program expand to more of a mobility management, kind of an access management approach. Parking is one piece of the larger transportation equation. So we really like that not to get lost, but right off the bat, of course, we wanna focus on parking issues. Having a robust and effective planning function is also an important component of an effective parking program. So all those were just kind of issues that we identified and we had tried to address those in these, in these primary action items. So adopting the vision and mission statements and recommended program guiding principles that were in the report, hiring a parking management professional and/or engaging a parking management firm. The idea of engaging a parking management firm is you really don't have the expertise in-house right now to do it as effectively as a firm that's done it, you know, for years and years and years. They can get all those processes in place, all the policies, all the procedures. And there's so many different areas where they need those things. I think it really, even if it was just for an initial three-year period, to get the systems in place, I think it would make a huge improvement in the overall program development. Creating a parking advisory board and implementing parking management best practices was also discussed in the report. Beginning to process, the process to evaluate investment in new on- and off-street technologies, we talked about that briefly. Leveraging parking as a community and economic development strategy by developing a comprehensive parking, developing a comprehensive parking planning function. Just what we expect, it's kind of a, people just think cars get parked and they just don't think how that impacts the overall community in terms of perceptions and the ability to get new development to occur or to retain existing businesses. So we think that's an important component that largely gets lost in these studies. Improving the utilization of the existing parking garage by investing in needed repairs and improvements and upgrades, I think is an important element. Developing new parking program brand and marketing programs. Again, this is part of changing the perception of parking downtown and changing the perception of downtown itself. Investing in training and staff development with a goal of really mastering the fundamentals of parking system management. We provided a large number of parking management data benchmarks or key performance indicators that you could use going forward. Explore the potential of parking meters to increase vehicle turnover, improve the efficiency of on-street parking and encouraging use of the parking garage. This is probably the most controversial thing in the report. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in terms of revenue projections, that kind of thing. Adopting a new, the program vision and mission statements, hiring the parking professional. I think we just talked about those, sorry, I duplicated those. So it's the current parking maintenance program and enforcement programs. We provided quite a few tools in the appendices that you can use that stuff right away to really start assessing those dimensions of your program. Also investing in mobile license plate recognition technology, we think could enhance your parking enforcement program significantly. Expanding the scope of the program over time to be more mobility-oriented, as you mentioned. Planning function, including, if you don't wanna have a full planning function within parking, it will at least include parking management and larger community planning initiatives, which we just think makes sense. A lot of times, parking is kind of the Rodney Dangerfield of professions, you know, like to say it out loud in case it might catch on. But, you know, we don't really get a lot of respect, but it really is important to the community. And so we think that, you know, getting a seat at the table is, is a win sometimes. We did provide a lot of recommendations on design and curb lane management strategies. And we recommended potentially doing a pilot program on either second or center streets to enact some of those policies and maybe just on an implementation, on an incremental basis, not a full-blown pilot necessarily. I did wanna just show you, you probably didn't see all of these documents, but these are all the appendices of the parking management toolkit. So there's all, if you need residential parking program, you've got a mold for that. If you wanna talk about, here's all your results from the online, from the surveys we did. Here's a nice document that talks about TDM basics. Anyway, there's just tons of really detailed information in there, how to do an on-street, a parking enforcement audit program yourself. It's got a whole manual on setting up a parking enforcement, a manual for you. So you just need to customize that each week to the Casper specific. But there's tons of good information to help you start building the program once we are gone. We were here last time, there were a few questions that we wanted to circle back to. And one of those was the question of parking meters, what are the benefits for Casper? The question comes from Council. Just to summarize, we think that to improve the on-street turnover by limiting the employee use of on-street resources is really the primary reason. And having that turnover, if we got from two and a half to five or six, I think there would be a huge impact to the businesses that support this. This is a little graphic from actually downtown Vancouver. But they measure their downtown turnover at about 5.6 per day. They did some research and found that the average customer spends about 32 bucks. And that the potential retail sales based on that per stall was about 176 bucks. And times 303 shopping days a year, each potential stall should, could generate up to 53,000. So it really does have an impact on the businesses if we can get that turnover up.
Did you say Vancouver?
Vancouver.
Has too many people in it? It's comparable to Casper, Wyoming?
It's more about the turnover of the spaces that we're focused on here. Your number is probably not gonna be that high, so this number's not gonna be as high for you. But it still has an impact. If we don't, if those spaces are just sitting there clogged up with employees, it's gonna impact how successful those businesses are and whether we actually retain those businesses downtown. So it's just an example, but just to show the importance of the turnover is the point of that. I'm not trying to compare it to Vancouver necessarily. The other thing, getting the employees off the street and just freeing up the spaces will improve, for people that need longer stays, they will then go into the garage as opposed to paying on-street and dealing with the time limits. So we think that all those things are part of the reason for meters. The other part of that argument is while revenue is not the primary motivation for doing parking meters, it does provide substantial revenue stream. So this is a model, all these variables can be changed. We try to be fairly conservative. But the bottom line was, in the first year, you'd probably generate about $470,000. If you get that number of meters with all those assumptions built in. And then your cost for the first year would be that, about 500. So you'd be, you'd lose about $166,000 the first year. But the second year, you'd have $371,000 annual revenue and that would happen every year after that. So all of the other stuff in the report that needs funding could be funded out of this initiative if you decided to move forward with parking meters. Another question that was asked was about program organizational structure and where parking management lives within the organization. We looked at a variety of different models that we looked at and we used these criteria to evaluate what we thought the, the, the different models provided. In the end, we decided on a hybrid of the typical city, vertically integrated city model, not the horizontally fragmented model I mentioned. And then there's another, there's another concept of what they call a professional services model. And that's married with the, the outsourced management piece. So what we're recommending is essentially a city department model. It's kind of a lean mean staff. We're not trying to build a big bureaucracy here. We can, you know, one or two staff people utmost and then you outsource the day-to-day functions. And that's pretty much the recommendation there. We don't think you're big enough for a parking authority. And we're trying to keep things as tight and as lean as we can from a parking management perspective. Part of the rationale was that just the size of the community, let's keep it small and affordable. It's essentially a new function, so there's a lack of existing expertise to manage the discipline. And that's why the outsourced model was part of that. Improved coordination and collaboration between city and state and DDA, we think is really important. The desire to promote the recently adopted plans, the comprehensive plan, the long-range transportation plan, the bike and ped plan, all of these talk about parking to some degree. So it was really logical that you would get into looking at parking now, because it was mentioned in all those plans. And this has just taken that to the next level. And leveraging parking management again as a tool for community and economic development, we think is critical, so. Very high level, there's tons of information, about 170 pages or so, maybe 20 pages. The appendices are probably 2,000 pages worth of data, which is really for your staff in the long run to really get into implementations. So, questions?
Any questions? Thoughts, concerns? Charlie?
Just thinking about how the meters would function, Dennis, and how, how things have worked in other communities. Currently, if someone parks downtown and we use the old system of chopping their tires and coming back two hours later and seeing if they're still there and then ticketing them if they are, people basically have to move their car. With, wait, with a meter, if you wanna park there all day, all you have to do is go out and feed it or use the app. And an employee could literally dominate that space for the, no.
Don't think so.
How, how would that, okay, that would be the question. What would prevent, what would prevent someone?
First of all, they probably wouldn't wanna pay that much. Second of all, with the LPR system that we're recommending for enforcement, we would know, even if they moved their car just a block of space away or a couple of spaces, whether technically it would still be legal under the current system. The LPR system would know that, know where they were and where they are. So there's a policy, Fort Collins, for example, just implemented a policy that said, if you do move your car, if you still need to stay downtown, and you wanna move your car, you have to move it at least a block and a half away. But that was unenforceable without the technology. But with the technology, they could tell that. And the other thing that they did was they created a policy of their, the way their citations work. If you got the first citation, it would be, you know, say, $10, whatever the number is. Normally it would be like $10, $20, $30, $40, something like that, kind of a progression. But in Fort Collins, the, the, the real problem is the habitual people that are doing it over and over and over again, right? Habitually taking up what should be short-term parking resources for their, for their own benefit. So in Fort Collins, the policy is, the first citation's actually a warning. And it's, it's an educational opportunity to tell people how to park. Because that's not the real problem. The real problem are those people that are habitually gaming the system, so. Scenario, it would basically keep getting, after the third ticket, you might be up to $100 a citation. So it's really gonna get people's attention. But if you modify your behavior over a course of 180-day period, and you don't have any more citations, you kind of drop back down to gray skyline again. So that's what we're really after, is not letting those employees clog up the downtown spaces. So that's just an example of a combination of policies and technologies that would change the current dynamic.
But if you went, I may follow up. But if you went with this system, and I'm guessing Councilman Johnson might have a problem with this, basically there would be a database telling, basically keeping track of where everyone parked and when and for how long.
Not necessarily. I mean, you would know, what they would track is how many citations you had within a period of time. And they would know that.
Okay.
Essentially what they call scot-free outlets.
To find those habitual violators. Thank you.
Jesse, Sean, Chris and Bob. Go ahead, Jesse.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious to know how the City Manager felt about possibly bringing on additional staff to manage parking? Do you see that necessary or do you find that a valid recommendation? And is that something you're willing to take on?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I can say that taking on additional staff does make me nervous. I, I'm interested in understanding more about what the return would be from a position and a, you know, kind of a smaller organization, if you will, would, would, would bring. The other question that I would have is what we might gain by way of partnering with a group like the DDA as, as an example, that potentially could help us in that regard, if that's possible. So I, I do have questions.
And just one quick follow-up. When we had Rocky Mountain Power that had the incentive that we took advantage of for most of our buildings of changing to LED, for example, I know that they're going to do that for the parking garage. If that was implemented or did we see a change? I know some of the recommendations are to continue to upgrade the lighting within the structure, but were those previous enhances done?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, do you mind if I defer to Liz for that answer?
All right.
Your honor, members of council, and I am sure Councilman Powell can weigh in too from the board, but that test was very, very successful last year and that's what we based our capital request to you off.
Oh, okay.
Is to get the entire garage relit this year and, and that was approved through the, the budget.
Okay. Great, thanks.
My assumption is that it was partially, that's what I thought I understood.
Go ahead, Sean.
Was there a recommendation on what we would charge people to park in a parking spot, your parking meters?
Dollar an hour. To pay for all the new technology stuff, you need at least a dollar an hour.
So I have philosophical issues with parking enforcement, traffic enforcement in general. So are taxed to build the road, are taxed to maintain the road, are taxed on yearly basis to drive on the road. I wanna tax them to park on the road. And it is a tax, because the government can take the money by force if they want to. So, just wanna put that out there.
Chris?
I have a couple on my list here. And maybe you're familiar with it enough. We've had LPR systems here in the past. And when I say in the past, I guess it's been seven or eight years. They were epic failures, mostly because of our, our license plate makeup. Some are flat, some are infrared reflective, some are different colors. Our bucking horse, our character, we couldn't make them work. And when we tried to key them in so they were sensitive enough, they would replaid shirts on people. Because that technology, because I'm all for LPR and if we're gonna have it, you bet, check who's got a warrant, check who's a violent criminal, on the run from the law. They go dual-purpose thing. We just couldn't make it work.
Technology's improved dramatically.
They work now, right?
Now, there are some issues, for example, Second Street. If you go so slow down Second Street, you might start backing up traffic. In Fort Collins, they decided just to walk that particular beach. So there are some compromises you might need to make. But overall, it's working very good. Then if you ever get to the point where you need a residential parking permit program, those kind of things, it's a great resource for those kind of programs as well.
And the other part I have, I see on our future agenda that, on the council meeting on the third, is adopting the Urban Center Parking Plan. And I'm assuming that's this and then would it be in its entirety?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that would be the motion that would accept the final draft, but does not mean that council is giving a green light for all of the recommendations.
Well, when the words say adopting, it does mean that.
That might be your opinion. My opinion is you still have to give me direction to, to carry out various aspects of, like, for example, hiring people to be our parking manager, putting in meters. I would not do that without your direction to do specifically those things.
Well, I'll hold that off already. So it's on the consent thing. My, my recommendation on addition of people would be, we let Chief McPeters manage the parking program and if the permission comes from him, that it needs greater oversight. I'd listen to him.
Bob?
Yeah, I just, I, I think probably reiterating your words, Carter, I think this is a working document. We did a study. We know we have some potential issues that concern management. But I think we've got a hugely different technology than what was available even two years ago. We've talked a little bit about small cell technology. That allows a huge number of options that are being used in, in a lot of places around the country. Literally, put your credit card in a parking meter or a kiosk on a block and put your license number in there or maybe even tie it to your, some number on your card. And it allows some flexibility in how you do that. It, it, it addresses the issue that you talk about, a guy feeding the meter. And I know when I was young, working in downtown, what you used to do is put your nickel in and hit it hard enough, you'd get an hour for a nickel's worth of time. Those days are gone.
Cool handle.
That was back in the day when they were pitching. A minor with a beer and they pour the beer out and let them go home.
Well, I was a minor doing this.
Glad you brought one of those up.
Now, I, I look at this as being a working document. We've got some ideas to go on, but I think this just ties so well with small cell technology that I think, we need to look at this, and I think over a period of time, with, with the chief and, and our people in development, I think we've got some real potential to help out.
I think if you just look at, I just looked at the guiding principles and the, and the, there's an admission statement as proving that, perhaps, there's so many details, there's so much, if you brought in a parking manager, he would come up with fifty other ideas and fifty other suggestions. And those are suggestions you should really be listening to, because they're meant to be more specific to you. But in terms of the overall approach, I think the approach is very sound in terms of helping you achieve your larger community goals. And there's so much expertise that you don't have now that you don't even know what you don't know, that, again, just turning it back to the DDA or to the police department, to me, would overlook that fact, and just, there's just a ton of information that you need to move forward.
Dallas?
Carter, Councilman Walsh makes a good point about just wanting to adopt that act. After taking the beating on this building code, there's going to be things in this parking meter our public is not going to understand. And we gotta be, we should be careful out politically. I don't think we're really paying enough attention to the political side of these things with these constituents, because they're confused. And I, I, I just hate to see people confused, but I also hate getting threatening email as well. So, so I don't know if that's what he was getting at, but that's what I got out of just passing that code where, because I trust in you to administer a pro-traffic, really. But it does bother me to just pass this big code that nobody's read. I finally read this building code, and it's a problem. But nobody really reads it, or tries to understand it. So there we go.
Well, I, I, but I think that what you're saying, Carter, is that really, we're not looking at, quote, adopting all this, it's more like accepting the, the review for, as a plan to look at.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'd, I'd be very, very comfortable with that terminology. Absolutely.
Charlie, and then Chris.
A kind of a comment and a question. I mean, you guys have, have given us a, a direction that's radically different, really, from the direction we received, what, five years ago, from the Crandall or Ram, Crandall or Rambla study that basically said we needed a slew of parking garages at twenty thousand dollars a space. Have, do you have any suggestions for us as to how to deal with Dallas's concern about public perception and selling the idea that if we're more aggressive about management, we can eliminate the demand that would lead us to these high-cost solutions that were proposed earlier, which was, I think, five garages.
Having worked with Crandall or Rambla before, it's like that that is kind of their pattern. They're so focused on downtown retail and all that, that's, they don't look at those details. When I look at it, I see you have excess capacity that you're just not managing as effectively as you can, could be, and that could postpone any future capital investment for a number of years, which I think is the prudent thing to do. The other comment about the perception and selling this to the community, and I'm really glad you asked that question, because in a lot of communities, we've made recommendations like this, and they decided to go the cheap route and just hire a coordinator, not a manager or a director level. But what you get with a manager or director level is the ability to communicate to your constituents, to be engaged in the community, to sell these concepts. Over time, you have to educate. People aren't going to read a thousand-page report, which is not going to do that. But if you can go out and meet with them and talk to them about the issues and bring them up to speed slowly, and start showing incremental progress, I think that's a really positive thing. And to make that investment in a, a person with the right level of expertise and the ability to communicate, and to communicate effectively with you as well, I think is really a critical part of our thinking on that recommendation for a parking manager.
Just follow-up, have you seen that done effectively within an existing police department?
Typically, police departments are not my first choice. I would rather have them be in economic development or someplace like that. They tend to be either in Public Works or groups like that. But no, I typically don't recommend putting parking under police, partly because they've got more important things to worry about, and they just have a different mindset. We want more of a customer service orientation, not, and police aren't customer service oriented, but, you know, they're more enforcement oriented, that's just their nature. So I would rather see it in community development or planning or economic development. That's the trend in the industry, it's shifting from the more traditional organizational models to the models like that.
Thank you. Chris, and then Dallas.
Yeah, just, I, I think there does need to be some things taken care of downtown with parking, and not opposed to meters. Be prepared for this, there is nothing in this city that's more volatile than parking and animals. I'm not kidding you.
Swimming pools, chickens, dogs.
No, no, they don't. Parking and animals. They will consume, right?
Tie the bar to the meter.
This, just something to think about on outside management, and I don't mean to speak for the police department. You go outside the police department, and with today's restrictions on information and databases, you're not going to get who the registered owner is of those license plates. So it's going to be very difficult to enforce that, because you cannot have it. So it has to be an aspect of law enforcement.
You need to be involved, all city departments need to be involved, frankly. I mean, the other big part of this manager's position is to coordinate with all the other city functions, because they, they're so connected on so many levels.
Dallas?
So there's a theme, that's a comment, and a question, there's a theme that I see happening. It's always about punishment. I heard him mention a hundred-dollar fine to people. Now, I remember when they got rid of the parking meters in Casper, and I, and now I appreciate what that council went through that I didn't know. And, and what people told me later, and how volatile that was. Because if you, this report, if you say we're going to train people by punishing them, it's like putting a shock collar on a dog. It might work maybe with the dog, but you might bite your hand too. So we got a building code that wants to punish people. We've got a provision in there that says that every day they're in violation, they can be charged a different crime, they can be charged sixty, seventy times before they have their, it's making people really upset. Now you got parking where you're going to get some sort of device that they can scan everybody's plates and tell everybody who it is. There'll be people wanting to come downtown. This is, this is Wyoming, this is, we're, we're twenty years behind on a lot of this stuff. And I just think some of this is too punitive, and we just should have stopped right now doing it.
I actually agree with, I, I think this is not that. I think this is minimizing the punitive stuff by trying to manage all the other aspects. And the enforcement piece is the last thing you do. People would, they'll pay their buck to park, but they hate getting a thirty, forty-dollar citation for coming downtown. But the ones that are doing it repetitively are the real problem, and they're causing harm to everybody else. And if we don't get control of it, it doesn't have to be a hundred dollars. But, you know, I just, I want to minimize the negative and the punitive side of things as much as possible, and focus on the other dimensions personally, so.
I'd like, I'd like to see something like that. In Boulder, they have those machines, you put your credit card in, and it says you can buy two or three different time slots in one, that you get a maximum of three and a half hours. And that's it, that's all you can park there, you gotta leave after that. And you've got to go park way, way somewhere else. So that makes sense to me, but this hundred-dollar fine to try to train our citizens, I'm totally against that, totally.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, a good place to start, I would be more inclined to spend money on the parking garage, enhance that entire area, and then see if that increases use, and hopefully gets people parking in there, people off Second and Center Street. When it comes to the meters, you know, I wouldn't want every place to be metered, but I'd like the parking garage enhancements first, and then maybe gauge it from there. But I like the idea that other downtowns do high-demand areas. Our area, for an example, Second Street and Center Street, that's where you'd see meter parking, and then that would get people to either pay for the parking that's in high demand, or park on the side streets that aren't getting that high use that we wish people would actually use, but that's where the free parking's at, or have free parking in the parking garage, for example.
Mike?
I was interested in Dallas's observation about down in, in Boulder, that, okay, you can buy three and a half hours, and then you have to move. Well, what happens if you don't move? There's got, you know, there's, there's got to be a stick there.
You get a ticket.
Yeah, you get a ticket then. And so you're still back to the, you're trying to teach people by punishing them. You know, I, I was out at Sam's Club today, grocery shopping, and I was thinking about Dean Serslin, and Dean's Sporting Goods downtown. Dean, when they opened the mall up, Dean was talking about downtown parking, and how people that he would talk to, and he, his store was right south of the Wonder Bar, where the sushi places now, but if any of you don't remember. But, but what he talked about was this idea, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, that people talk about, well, we want to park right in front of that store. Well, he would go out to the mall, or to Walmart, or Kmart, or wherever, and figure out how far it was that he'd have to park to get into that store, or to get into the mall to do whatever. And it was the equivalent of, you know, from his store there at Center and Midwest, clear over to Walcott and Second, or something, you know, huge. But people have a mental block about that. You know, if I want to go to, to the certain store, I want to park right in front of it and have the sensation that I'm parking in front of it. So how you overcome that? And, you know, if you have a magic wand to, to overcome that, but I don't think, you know, with all due respect to, you know, Jesse, your idea of enhancing the, the garage, and I think that that's not a bad, I think that's a good idea, but I don't think that's going to get over that problem that Dean, I think, very correctly perceived years ago, that when, that people have this idea that, well, I'm going to come downtown, and I'm going to park right in front of the store that I want to go to, and I'm going to get mad and leave if I don't.
It's a culture.
Yeah.
Really, see, the thing is, it's a culture.
Would you be willing to pay for that privilege of parking right in front?
It was the reason the milk and butter is in the far corner of a grocery store.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's that same kind of a thing.
It's a culture.
Cultures are hard to change.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Jesse?
So this is set up for information only, I was just curious, are we going to address it again with staff recommendations on what to accept or not accept, or how are we going to proceed to manage our parking spaces in a more efficient manner?
You know what the next step is?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think Councilman, moving forward with acceptance of the study is an appropriate next step. I think that at least gives us the opportunity to bring questions to you later with regard to meters, with regard to, you know, move beyond the parking garage enhancements, for example, and so on, so that we can have those deliberations and dialogue as well.
Charlie?
Well, let's just be sure this isn't one of these studies that collects dust, and that's always the worry about when we finally get to the point of accepting it. So I would hope that certain portions of these, of the executive summary would come to us for further discussion, to see if we are going to take on any of these things. So, and I agree, we have to change that perception, but the real perception we need to change isn't so much that you have to walk too far, but in my opinion, the perception that if I go downtown, there will be a space. It may not be right in front, but there will be a space. And right now, there are a lot of people who don't believe that.
If I was your parking manager, starting tomorrow, I would expect that we would rehash all these issues, you would raise concerns, I would address them and give you more options. People want choice, people want a variety of things, they don't want to have it dictated to them. We need to find the right solution for Casper, and I think with the right parking manager in place that knows all the stuff that's in that report, you can get good, solid answers, and you can craft solutions that will be more customized for what you need.
But we can't really go down that route without a revenue plan. Because we have to have a way to pay for the parking manager.
Tip for the DDA. Tip for the DDA, and then have a management.
That way out.
And parking.
That would be one solution.
Curtis, have you had a question?
I can wait until Councilman Walsh.
I got Dallas.
Okay, I can wait.
Okay. Go ahead, Dallas.
So my understanding, one of the biggest problems down there is employees who park on the streets. Is that one of the biggest ones? So what would be your suggestion on how to get all of the employers down there to agree not to let their people park on the street? That might be the easiest thing in the world. If you make them a deal, they have to park in the parking garage.
It hasn't been that easy in other cities. It sounds like a good idea, I agree.
I know, but I'm not too sure. It couldn't be done here because, well, you, you'd have to check it out to find out whether it worked, but I mean, if, if we had, and I don't know whether we can pass something that would say all employees have to, can't park on Second Street. We've said that, you know, the food truck can only park there twice a month, or whatever we've given them. So let's say that their employees have to park off those streets.
Well, what happens when they park there when they're off duty, and they're just a citizen?
Well, that's a different situation.
You get pulled up.
But it's the, it's the eight hours they're parking there during working time is the big problem.
That is true.
If they come down there as a citizen, then they're, it's the same, I would say it's fine, pay that, pay whatever the parking meter says. But that's, that's, that isolates the problem, doesn't it, in what you found? In terms of who's using that parking, it's employees that are there all day long. So it's kind of just a one-nish sort of thing, that maybe there's another way of solving that problem. I, I don't, I haven't given it a lot of thought, but I always thought about it. So if I went down and said, Lou, can you get all your employees to go park over the parking garage? I know the people in the Alphabell said they've been renting two slots in the parking garage for twenty years, and they don't park on the street. Because they'd rather have that one little spot for somebody that comes down and pulls into their business that wants to park in front, as Mike said. So maybe that, that's the problem to possibly solve, and then it wouldn't, wouldn't, I don't think it would be as hard to, to solve that as retraining Casper, allowing people to change the entire culture from free parking for the last thirty-five years. It's just my personal opinion.
Chris, Mike, and Charlie?
I'm going to throw something out there for you guys to think about. We can't have a rule without a standard. There's going to be a consequence to label it anything you want. You get what you consent. If there's no enforcement, if there's no consequence, whatever the fine is, that can be debated, but absolutely that has to be there. And, and I would ask you all to listen to what's being talked about right here. How do we change perceptions? What do we do to make people think, please stop that? The nine of us are not here to alter anyone's thinking or perception. Let's apply a rule, evenly enforce it to everybody, employee, non-employee, and not worry about where they work, what they're thinking, that it's not our role. On a rule, a reasonable rule, and resolve it.
Mike?
Oh, when, Mr. Mayor, sir, when you're talking about that these parking spaces being occupied by, quote, employees, I suspicion that it was not possible for you to discern that those were employees, for instance, of a bar or restaurant, a retail store versus employees who might be on the fourth floor of an office building. And, and I, I bring that up because I have a great suspicion that most of the retail, that most, if not all, of the retail outlets and the bars, restaurants, and that kind of thing, probably are telling their employees, no, you, you go park somewhere else. But when we're talking about these employees, it's the, the person that's up on the second, third, fourth, fifth floor of an office building or somewhere. They, and those, those entities have no incentive, you know, to, it's not, it's not killing their retail trade to not have the pedestrian people walking in and out. And so, you know, I think that's something that we need to think about. I don't, I, I would be just amazed if there's any retail business, restaurant, or anything like that. I don't, I, I would be just amazed if there's any, uh, retail business, restaurant or anything like that down there that's not already telling their people, you gotta, you know, you don't be taking up our good valuable parking places right in front here. Uh, the other thing, I really have to agree with what Councilman Walsh was saying, that I think that, uh, you know, one of our jobs and one of our functions, not only with reference to this parking business, but with reference to a lot of other things that are gonna become a lot of other codes and standards that we're gonna be addressing. The job of the council is to establish a standard and, and try to see that the community lives up to that standard. And it's tough, you know, that's a tough decision to say, okay, here's a standard that we think's a reasonable standard for the city of Casper. And, uh, and then, you know, try to induce people to live up to that.
Charlie.
Oh, just another point about the, the question of who's monopolizing the spaces. We don't know, we're probably not gonna be able to find out. Uh, I know Brian Scott always complained about people who lived in the Wyoming National.
Bank apartment.
The bank apartment, the National Bank apartment. The National Bank apartments monopolizing downtown parking space on the street. It's just, it, it is difficult to know who and for how long. And we're not gonna get good answers to that question, I think we just have to create some rules.
Your enforcement staff probably have a pretty good idea, actually, they see the same cars over and over again and they, they recognize the people. And a lot of businesses tell people, don't park in front of our store. If you park in front of his store, they don't really care that much. It sounds good to say, don't park down here or don't park there. A lot of places even buy them parking in, in a circus lot and they still don't use it because you can't control everybody all the time. It's just our experience around the country.
Just a quick one, I, I could tell you from attending DCBA, the Downtown Casper Business Association, there are no office buildings that belong to that group, they're retailers. And they really have a burr under their saddle with their employees parking in front of the retail stores. And they have expressed this and they actually try and control it internally. So, what you say is exactly right, Councilman, that if somebody's up on the fourth floor of an office building, they really don't care. They don't have a dog in the fight. But the guy that's on the bottom floor trying to sell retail does, and they absolutely are proactive in telling their employees not to park there, so.
You had a question?
Yes, um, please don't throw me out of the room for bringing up food trucks. This, this is a very easy question. One of the things that our current ordinance suggests is that of creating a lot that would serve as kind of a food truck, um, gathering area. In, in your knowledge of the downtown and the, and the lots that are available to the city and that kinda thing, do you have a recommendation that you think would be a good lot for that purpose?
Not off the top of my head, I haven't really studied that, but I do think it's a good idea in general. If you can find one convenient enough and meets the needs of all parts. The space around the, 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 the street park, it seemed like a logical place to me. I mean, there's lots of, lots of activity there now, it seemed like it'd be a great amenity to have as part of that. You know, I would give up a parking space or two for that if that made sense or find a place to put them. But that's the, that's the one thing that really came to my mind.
Jesse.
Quick question, um, while we have the expert here, how do you feel about having just a small space for, you know, a motorcycle, for example? Is that something that you see in other downtowns or do you see that as relevant in Casper?
There are lots of little spaces if you can squeeze a motorcycle in, or one parking space can become three motorcycle spaces. Parking space could become a, a bike corral for twenty bikes or however many it is. I mean, so there's lots of competing use for on-street spaces, you've dedicated car share spaces and bus spaces and loading spaces. That's become a big trend, this whole idea of curb lane management is becoming much more problematic in urban environments right now because there's so many different uses that people want for that very valuable real estate, so. Yeah, you just have to prioritize, you know, what you want and what, what's, what are you trying to achieve by making an exception? And just be aware that you're never gonna get any more on-street spaces than what you have. It's easy to whittle it down, it's hard to create new. So it's a valuable resource and we just have to effectively manage and prioritize what we want to get out of those spaces for the benefit of a specific area.
The only reason I bring it up, there are some areas downtown where if you just had three feet, um, that was just not painted yellow, you could park a motorcycle there.
Yeah.
You know, me, for example, if I'm going down there, I feel bad for taking a parking space, having a motorcycle. I could easily fit in a different area, whether that's in front of a, a handicap, um, parking space. Uh, when we have, you know, the different parking that's not diagonal, you know, so it's just, it would be a good option in some places downtown that maybe Council can, can consider when we're implementing or changing parking in downtown.
I know we're extending this, but we're not gonna have you back again. The other issue that's come up is the idea of bump outs for restaurants. And, uh, basically allowing restaurants to capture two or three spaces for seating. Can you comp, and, and then, and, and we haven't really had a, a discussion about this for some time. But when we did, there was some discussion about how many could you have in a given block and still have sufficient parking? You know, should there, should there be some balance in terms of the density of those? Uh, how do you pick and choose which restaurant would get to do this and which restaurant wouldn't? Uh, I assume you have some experience with all of that as well.
Zula just went through this with one particular bar that wanted to do that. And, um, what they ended up with was a bit of a compromise. They, they expand, they allowed them essentially to create a parklet in front of the restaurant where they could have dining, but only during, you know, the summer months. And then it reverted back in the winter when you're not gonna have that kind of outdoor activity, so. Um, but it really depends on how much park, additional parking is available for the other businesses around there. I think it's kind of on a block-by-block basis almost that you have to assess, you know, how much parking do we have? What kind of parking is it? How convenient is it? How's it impacting the other businesses? Coming up with a, you know, a checklist of issues that you would go through for each, each one of those that you would review, I think would be the appropriate approach. But there's a lot of factors that need to be considered and I just think having a good process for reviewing that and making sure all the issues are on the table before you make a decision is the way I would purged.
Dallas and Mike.
So what I'm thinking, because I remember, uh, a couple of discussions we've had where Charlie's brought up the fact of these, uh,
There are a few recent four.
Parking studies and then nobody did anything.
That's what we can leave.
And the comment was, is worrying about whether anybody's gonna do it this time. And so what's going through my mind is, my recollection was, is we did this parking study, one of the reasons was, is to figure out the thing with the food trucks, which we already took care of, basically. And then secondly, what Charlie just talked about was allowing these bump outs. So we really don't, we're not any further along with figuring out the bump outs, cause there is one restaurant that didn't wanna do that. And I don't know if they still do or not. I would doubt it. But, um, maybe it's a good thing just to let dust gather on this parking study. Because when I hear all the numbers that are going around in my head on how to fix this, it's in the millions of dollars, isn't it?
Well, if you implement the meters, I think you've got a funding source for almost everything you wanna do. If, if you can't make that decision, I think you've got some financial issues and you need to make a decision to prioritize an investment in this management of parking assets because it impacts everything else you're trying to accomplish. And if you don't allow, allocate any resources, you're never gonna do anything.
Well, I know, I, I understand that, and that's finding these resources because of this kind of economy that we're in right now. And I just keep, I, I don't know what all this will cost, but I've heard various numbers on parking meters and different kinds of, and these.
Meters will pay themselves back in a year, you'd have about half a million dollars a year if all the assumptions on that worksheet were, were accurate and I'm just trying to be fairly conservative.
And then you, but then I, I think you're convinced we probably should hire somebody that knows what they're doing to manage the whole thing.
Now, for half a million dollars a year, you can, you can fund a position and you can hire a parking management firm, at least for the initial three-year term and decide if you're getting the value for that investment. After the fact that you'd be, your, your management program would be so much more advanced at the end of that three-year period that you would, you would just have a much better idea of what's possible and the revenue that's just kinda being left on the table right now.
Well, please bear in mind, I don't think this city makes any money on it, loses money on everything, really does. And so I'm just wondering if, if what we're doing is creating another one of those situations where, cause it sounds to me like millions of dollars to, to implement all this stuff. I talked about it, and I hadn't heard from you whether you were recommending we make Walcott and Durbin two-way streets. And then when I talked to some people who know about that and explained the cost of all of that.
That's expensive.
I'm thinking.
Nothing I've suggested, other than the parking manager, the parking management firm and the meters, which we pay back after, after one year. I mean, the rest of it, I think.
Does that include all the equipment, like to read the license plates and all of that?
The LPR is just gonna have some breakdown of being, but it's not, I mean, it's in the less than a hundred thousand, depending on how many units you buy. So it's, none of this is millions of dollars, but the revenue is potentially half a million dollars a year. And you can bond against that for future parking assets. Now, if you decided to, to enhance those two parking lots, um, down here where the new state complex is gonna be, that's gonna be a fairly expensive proposition. In fact, I understand that's a state-owned property, but you're interested in enhancing it because it's just kinda crappy gravel lot right now. Again, you know, taking parking ugly, especially ugly parking lots like that, turning them into nice parking lots with a lot of good landscaping. I mean, just the visual perception and the, the change in the perception of that is, even though it's still parking, it's much nicer parking than it was before. And it just changes the way people think about things, so. That would be, I think, a fairly expensive proposition, depending on, you know, how aggressive you want to get.
So I've got two more, uh, that we're gonna move forward, so I got Mike and Chris.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Sir, I know that as a general proposition, you have said that we, you don't feel that we have a, a problem with, uh, inventory. You have, we have a problem with utilization. Uh, but also, did you guys do anything in the nature of thinking about just taking, for instance, all of Center, Second, David, Walcott, those streets, making those two-lane streets with diagonal parking on the streets? Taking Second Street, doing away with the serpentine effect and just putting diagonal spaces on all those? How that would improve things or would that, or do you have any observation about that?
If you had a supply problem, I would've looked at those kind of things, but since over fifty percent of your parking is unutilized right now, I didn't really feel like we needed to enhance the supply.
Okay, you answered my question, thank you.
Chris.
Well, just, uh, clarification of it, this is for Carter. We're gonna call this except in the parking plan. And then, anything that we decide to implement in the future will probably be brought to us section by section, so cost, funding, impact, all those details will be talked about when we actually move forward with any kind of action, if at all, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I, I agree with that statement. And what I would ask you to do is think about ways in which you think the ideal would be best, the ideal would be best captured to try and turnover spaces, cause I think both the public, the shopping public, as well as your businesses downtown would appreciate, uh, those innovations to make that happen.
Thank you, Dennis.
Do you, does anybody know, Mr. Mayor, how many parking spots are in that garage and how many are being utilized right now? Does anybody have that number?
The number's all in that report that we got, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Not sure. Do you have an estimate?
Liz, can you say?
Four hundred and fifty.
And I was just looking at Councilman Powell.
Or downtown, it's one of those.
Parking structure.
I don't know the number.
Utilization.
We can find out.
I know they're leased.
I've seen the report.
Cause I, I've heard they're already leased, so if you told people they had to go park in the parking garage, there's no parking in the parking.
Depends on which floor you go into. You got lower floor, a couple of those are, have a lot of leased spaces and then as you go up there, they're, it's leased, open for everyone.
Does anybody know how much of the parking garage is leased?
I don't.
We'll find out.
It's in the report, I think, D V A provided that information.
Thank you, moving forward, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Service line warranties of America.
You betcha. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
The council is aware that this, uh, discussion has been, um, anticipated for a few months now. The, I, I think the question among individual council people is different with regard to this, this program. And so, uh, I'm not exactly sure how to frame the discussion, but, but what I can say is, you've recently received an, an opinion from your attorney about aspects of this discussion. Uh, we've got some information in, in Mr. Beamer's department that might be helpful to you tonight to, uh, to this discussion. But we want to be sure, in either case, that we have it available for you to talk about, give additional direction to, in that the company is asking again to continue their relationship with the city. And that includes using the city's logo and so forth to promote for their business purposes. And so, with that, Mr. Mayor, we're open for questions or brief information from Mr. Beamer, whatever you prefer. And, and the attorney, I'm sorry.
Mine's an easy comment, I don't think we should let them use our name at all. I, I was confused by it, I bought that once and thought I was buying it from the city. Because I, it's just confusing, I think it's totally confusing to everybody in town. And sometimes they even act like they're city employees when people talk to them. So I read the memo, I agree with Henley, uh, I think we should not allow that anymore.
Chris.
I think the judge was wrong.
Oh, excuse me. Joe.
Mr. Mayor, then there are people in town that would think the building would cave in to hear me say this. I absolutely agree with, uh, Councilman there. And, uh, but I do have a, a question for Mr. Beamer. Do you have any idea, have any, has anybody in town that bought this scheme from these people, uh, actually collected anything on it?
Your honor, Councilman, I won't go as far as calling it a scheme, cause I understand it is relatively good insurance for those who need it. You know, who have actually made a claim, I think they've been treated relatively fair, fairly by the, uh, the warranty program. So I, I won't call it a scheme. Uh, I do share your concern about the use of the city logo, uh, for essentially a private insurance program, but I, I think, uh, we've got over twenty thousand accounts and I think roughly ten percent of, we got twenty thousand sewer accounts, roughly ten percent of our population take advantage of this program currently. Um, I think that if we don't continue this marketing, marketing agreement with the service line warranties in America, I think they may well pull out of this community, but.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I might continue, and thank you, Mr. Beamer, for, for that. The reason that I call it a scheme is, uh, I was looking at it and I'm like, like Dallas, I, oh, this is a good idea, you know, I'm gonna sign up for this. Well, I look, and I, you look at what their premiums are, and then the maximum that they'll pay if I, unless I misread their thing was forty-five hundred dollars. Two of the people in my neighborhood have relatively simple sewer line replacements, not, you know, where all they had to do was dig up their front yard from the house out to the street. One was, uh, ten thousand dollars, the other one was twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So, to me, this is like insurance, that's insurance in name only. And, and I, I, I don't like the city being in bed with some outfit letting them imply and make it look like this, this is from the city. For one thing, I also think this is just a bad gamble, that's, it's even if you win, you didn't win. You know, and so, so I, I would be all in favor of getting out of this deal with them. And if they leave town, uh, frankly, I think it'd be an improvement to the, to the town, that money would be staying here instead of going somewhere else.
Chris, Charlie and Jesse.
I think it's clear on what Mr. Henley wrote that our logo cannot be used, I don't even think it's a debatable point. The only thing I'm curious about, is this city of Casper, Wyoming, know our new logo? Our Y-O-City, or can we discard all those things and use the one that we found at the city on? City seal? So what is it?
Did you make this on the, on those logos? I, I will do my best. Um, we, we, uh, we, as in the city, years ago, did a, did a marketing sort of branding study and came up with the Y-O-City, um, moniker, as well as brand. The feedback that we'd been getting as of late was that, uh, it, it has been using, has been used very, very broadly with private companies and, uh, semi-public companies, as in non-private, but public sector. And, uh, it was really unclear. And it was really unclear in terms of communication as to who was who. And when you see a truck with a logo out there that says Y-O-City, is that a city or is that a non-city entity, et cetera? So we, we spent, I think, in the neighborhood of two hundred dollars to get this logo put together that's really clear with regard to it being the city of Casper as, as a logo, albeit different from the seal that Councilman Walsh might be referring to. And, um, and that's what we've kind of hung our hats on, if you will, and are transitioning more toward a city-specific branding versus what is more generic and nebulous as to who it's pointing to.
Well, so I'm, I guess, Mr. Henley, if they use this Y-O-City one, is that still contrary to them?
But they, they still have, we had that, it was in their last letter. They still reference Casper.
That's the problem, then?
That's the problem.
Okay.
Plus, it's, that insurance just isn't a good buy. It just isn't.
I live in a part of town where the sewer lines were put in poorly and they routinely fail.
Get it from your homeowners companies. Get it from a homeowner's company.
It's not any cheaper.
But you get more coverage. That's what he was saying.
Have you, have you had to replace yours?
No.
So I've been through this a couple of times.
But I, but I have had it back up and had forty thousand that I had to fix a house with.
Yeah, I've been down that road too, so, but that's a different one. That's a different method. It's actually the line.
The forty-five hundred, that's, you know, it's like these people who buy funeral insurance and it pays for an eleven-hundred-dollar funeral. And they've been paying a hundred dollars a year for thirty years.
Yeah, but that's people's choice. It's whether or not our logo's on there. And we don't need to get into what, what people shouldn't, shouldn't do as long as they don't, we don't act inappropriately. And I, I think that would make clear that we, we are.
We are, yeah.
Charlie and Jesse?
Uh, just a piece of information. When this first came up, I went to the trouble of calculating how much the company would likely, uh, collect in premiums over a given span of time and the amount that they would likely pay out, given the claim's history. And, uh, I think the profit, I don't recall exactly, but the profit margin was well over fifty percent.
Again, not a, not our responsibility. I don't know what State Farm makes on my car either.
That is true, that is true. But, and I, and I don't, and I don't either, so, but, um, or what's typical in the industry, but clearly they insist on use of our logo, um, in my opinion, because the sales product doesn't stand on its own.
I agree. I agree. We gotta, we gotta take it off.
I agree.
Jesse?
I just wanted to throw my two cents in. I don't feel comfortable after seeing what the city attorney had presented to us of them using the logo. You know, I, I do have some supplemental information regarding the, the plan and all of that. You know, the two, two thousand and sixty-nine accounts that people are currently registered with that. And then over the last twelve months, they've conducted a hundred and twenty-one jobs and paid a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So people are using it. I'm sure people in this room have insurance on their phones. I don't think it's a good idea to have insurance on their phone. I don't do it.
On your phone?
Differently.
I didn't, you could insure a phone.
Yeah, you can.
Seven dollars a month.
So, so some people, I think it's scam. But since we're talking about logos, there is an amazing forum that some mayors and city managers and administrators put together in what a brand can do for your city and how important that is to be branded and for other people to take hold of that and use it in, uh, whether it's promoting tourism or putting out shopping bags that all of your downtown merchants are using, or even promoting an event that's going to have, you know, the orchestra. Um, Stoughton, Virginia had an incredible presentation in Traveler's Rest. Um, and where is that? I think that's in one of the Carolinas, North or South. Um, but anyways, you know, branding is important and I think it would be, I think it's great for businesses to use it. And if we ever get the opportunity, um, I think it would be important to, to look at a brand that makes sense to everybody, that people such as our downtown merchants would love to use, and just promote the city of Casper mainly, and what it means to be here, what it means to travel here, and something that everybody that could be proud of. Um, with that being said, getting back to this service line warranty, the people that do offer it, um, as I mentioned earlier, they are going to be in our region next month. And so the question is for that work session in July tenth, would we like to see them, uh, there at all just to learn more about their program or if we cancel that program for the city of Casper entirely? And then the next question, I guess, is also the prescription drug plan. I think they have the city logo on that too. And that's a no-cost thing, but it's something that we still kind of provide to Casper residents.
Uh, Chris, Dallas, and Sean?
I don't, I don't think I need to hear anything from the company. I, I think the issue at hand is, is one thing and one thing only. Um, it appears against the con, contrary to the constitution of Wyoming and the state statute that we allow anybody to use the city of Casper logos as a representation of anything. So if that's out there on anything, it needs to be removed. Um, and it's a personal choice if, if a sewer line warranty people want to stay, if people want to get that. We're not here to alter anybody's perceptions on the type of insurance that they should or shouldn't have. It's just one small thing and it's our logo. I think we should just go to remove it and charge on.
Jesse asked if we wanted them to come in and have them talk to us. Do we want that to happen?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind hearing from them.
Kind of see who's in favor or...
But, Mr. Mayor, if those numbers that you just said are, are accurate, uh, instead of the forty-five hundred dollar benefit that I had been laboring under the impression was their limit, they're paying about eight thousand on average for that. So maybe I'm, maybe I profoundly misunderstood the terms of that, that thing. But I wouldn't mind hearing from them, but I absolutely agree with Councilman Wa, Walsh and with what Mr. Henley said. I, I don't think we should be in any manner endorsing or putting our, uh, putting our seal on there.
So my comment was simple. If I said, if I got you all to give me the Y-O-City law firm that represents people in municipal court, I'd get a lot more business. Because when the city endorses this insurance, that's what's causing that to be sold. That's a huge deal. And we're not getting any cut from them using our name to sell this product. It's like when John Elway won two Super Bowls and then now his name's on some Ford dealerships. They were selling a lot of cars because they thought John Elway owned it. He didn't own it. His name's off of it now because he's not the Super Bowl guy anymore. So the fact is, this name needs, whoever allowed that wasn't thinking, and it should be taken off immediately. And I agree, I don't want to immerse myself in their business practices and whether it's good insurance. Uh, but I don't mind telling people my own opinion about it either, because I've seen it and dealt with it and I...
I thought John Elway sold Chevrolets.
Whatever they were, whatever they were.
Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, Dallas pretty much covered what I had to say. I agree, we should take a little off.
Okay, and Kenan did text me and say that she was in favor of removing it as well. Um, so it sounds good. Is there a direct, I think, counsel?
So are we good on July tenth or no?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to come back to that really quick too, is on July tenth of having that group come in. Can I see who's in favor of that?
Give them five minutes. No questions.
Five minutes, Dallas. I'll vote for it if you, if it's literally five minutes.
I want to know how much their coverage is and what it costs a year so that we get that cleared up and then I can tell you whether it's good insurance.
Then call them.
Maybe will we have State Farm and Prudential Law Command in California?
They don't offer that. They don't offer that.
But, but the President, is that what we need to do? They're, they're not a, a city organization. They're...
But I think we should clear some problems up, Chris, because if our people bought it thinking it's city-owned, we have a duty to tell them. It isn't like we're making comments about State Farm. We have, we have allowed our citizens to believe that the city's sponsoring that insurance company. They're not. So I think we should straighten it out for them.
Good, Dallas.
The only reason that's available is through our membership with the National League of Cities, who has a partnership with this utility company that's out of Pennsylvania. And then the same thing with, um, the prescription discount drug program. Uh, that's a partnership with Cisco, Walgreens, and a bunch of other pharmacies, and even smaller pharmacies. But it's only because of our membership with that particular organization. Um, when that was originally established, the city of Casper could say, hey, well, we want a cut of every person that, that signs in or signs up for it. And then, um, the council and management at the time said, no, um, we want it to be as cheap and affordable as it possibly can for everybody. And it's going to be similar to how we're going to entertain the life-flight insurance, I guess. Whenever that comes, comes up. And if you ask that guy when he presents to us, he's used, it's funny, but he used, uh, the service line twice. He bought a house downtown, knew there's issues downtown with sewer lines, and he's used it twice and said it's great.
So are you in favor of having them come on the tenth? Good. Five minutes.
Four and a half.
I just want to know two things. What do you charge? How much do you cover? What, what's your maximum coverage? And how much have you, well, you could ask them these. How much have you collected and how much have you paid out? You'll get a good idea of one or the other. But the life-flight is a serious problem.
I agree.
Okay, we did already move forward with sole source, so agenda review.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, with regard to the agenda, I would certainly direct your attention to the grid document. And you can kind of see what we have slated to come forward in the next several weeks. Uh, certainly one of the major aspects of this document also is with regard to the items we have that aren't quite docketed at this point, which is the upcoming official agenda item section of the same, um, resource. The life-flight item, uh, I'm not sure that we have docketed and so, um...
It's not. It's on the upcoming.
It's on upcoming? Okay.
Right down, right here.
Gotcha. There it is. Okay.
We could get a good seminar from them, Mr. Manager, on the life-flight thing from the Attorney General's office, because they just won a good lawsuit with all of those, life-flight things. Because all they were, off the right, was forty-six hundred a trip, and they were charging a hundred and ten thousand. I think the state lost the lawsuit. It's a serious, serious problem.
Go ahead, Chris. You want to say something?
Yeah, what, um... I, I understand what the insurance is. I understand that it's super expensive for a life-flight. Is this going down the same rabbit hole as the sewer line? Then why are we going to talk about it?
If we don't give them the name.
Well, now that we're having, so we, we, we had okay, we had okay to move forward when Jesse had requested it. But now knowing this, is that something that we don't want to go down?
Well, I don't want to get in the business of, I don't, if we start advertising for insurance...
Having insurance to people?
And it, it's a good idea. I didn't realize it was out there. I may take advantage of this myself, but that's not our role. And if, and if it's not going to be, you know, tagged with the, one of the logos with the city of Casper, what are we doing?
Jesse, what did John say to you when he talked to you?
So he had a meeting with the county commissioners and the idea behind it is if you get on board, so basically if the, if the county got on board and bought insurance to cover all of the county residents, for example, then that service would be like three dollars per, um, per person or two dollars or something along that line, um, a month, or an X amount of dollars per year. And then at that point, people could buy into it and then pay the county back for that insurance. So it's basically offering insurance through, we're facilitating it to a certain rate. So the county commissioners didn't feel comfortable doing that, but they said, you know, we would be more inclined, um, to sponsor it or to say, yeah, we approve it, you know, go out there and, and sell it type thing. And then if you did that with that partnership, then it would be at a reduced rate of what they're currently offering it.
Go ahead, Chris. Judge was in for knocking.
Well, uh, so that I'm, I'm understanding this. Is this like these groups that they have where if you're part of a group, you can sign up and if you pay a certain amount, uh, then they agree that they'll come get you anywhere and only take whatever Medicare or private insurance pays and waive any further fees? Is that the kind of coverage that we're talking about or are we talking about some, some more kind of regular quote insurance?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I know Jesse had more of, more of conversation because John Perry, who's, who's coming to want to speak to us, is a flight nurse. So he, his interest, I think, and Jesse can correct me if I'm wrong, his interest is wanting just to be able to help the community because he knows how critically expensive it is, um, for life-like.
I'd, I'd want to hear from him, but I absolutely agree that we shouldn't be putting our logo on anything. But if there is some sort of a way that we could qualify everybody in town as a member of a group that they could then buy into these, uh, because it's, you know, it's a hell of a deal. I, I believed in this, you know, when the hospital was doing it, uh, that was a great deal. Uh, now it's gone from being a great deal, I think, to being a good deal. But, uh, you know, it's still a good deal, at least in my opinion. And if there's some way that we could make that good deal more available to the citizenry, I'd want to hear about it. I'm not saying I would automatically want to do it, but I, I'd want to hear about it.
Does everybody else feel, I guess? Oh, Chris, sorry. I agree with Councilman.
It sounds like we're, we're getting into the same slippery slope. And part of what Mr. Henley said was with our name associated on the sewer line thing, there's a possibility of some kind of liability or at least the impression that we are sponsoring this. Now, if we in fact sponsor it, clearly we're right in the middle of this. Um, and I understand things are expensive and medical care is expensive. And I also understand that there's an aspect, personal responsibility and an expectation of people to be productive members of society. And so get your own insurance, make your own choices, and we as a city are not bound to buy people insurance.
What about our employees?
They have insurance, and if they want to buy additional insurance, it's the same thing that I did the whole time I worked here and now with the state.
Nobody has insurance to cover these.
No, I don't, but if I wanted, I, I have to get it additionally.
They're a thousand dollars a mile.
It's a thousand a, a month or a mile?
A thousand a mile to take you on a trip from Shoshone to Casper was fifty-three thousand dollars for one of my cases. One of them to Denver was a hundred and ten thousand. Who has coverage and who can pay for that?
Well, insurance to get it is probably a good idea. I don't see that it's our responsibility to...
No, I agree with that.
I'm not saying we want to automatically sign up for it, but just that, want to hear from them.
Kenan said we need to open up to all the competitors.
Is it covered with our employees? Do they have coverage for life-like? Probably not, do they? That is a, that's just becoming an incredible deal.
John, is this, does this tread on kind of what the concerns Chris is saying?
It does. I tell you, uh, one, you not only have the, the endorsement here that you have, right, and you put in the papers, but now you're going to let them come in and advertise for, how long have we been talking about this? Forty-five minutes. It's going to be perpetually on YouTube. So, I mean, aren't we giving them something for value to value perpetuate their name, give them to the public?
Can we ever stop getting in the middle of problems?
Well, I, I guess I'll go, go ahead, Jesse.
I just wanted a quick question to maybe Mr. Henley. Since we're part of the National League of Cities that offers this additional service, um, to people that are a member of NLC, you know, should we just cancel the entire contract agreement completely and say we no longer want to offer this for the city of Casper in addition to, um, I guess, the prescription drug discount program where people can have maybe ten bucks off of their, their medications?
I, I don't know about the underlying contract, but, you know, for National League of Cities, um, they're not a Wyoming entity. You know, they're not constrained by our constitution. If they wanted to come in and offer that to the citizens, I suspect they could.
So the service line warranty program, they're out of another state too though, so does that still apply or does it not?
No, but, but we're giving them our name and goodwill. That's a value. That's, that's the difficulty.
Okay.
So just to wrap up, July tenth, do we want to have life-like come in and speak to us about that?
Well, Air Med put down the shovel.
I'll be with, I'll be with, I'll be with Chris on this one.
I'd like to hear from them.
So, can I see who's for it?
I'm just confused on what's allowed and what's not allowed. If they're from Wyoming, not from Wyoming, because Air Med is across...
If they're from Wyoming, not from Wyoming, cause Airmade is across pretty much all the lower forty eight and a few other countries here and there. So I'm not where, I'm not sure where their headquarters are at.
They're all hiring companies to run their collections. So here's the scene. Child leaves to go to Riverton for a basketball game in this setting as a passenger with her seatbelt on. And due to the driving of other people, she she gets ahead and they they, somebody makes a decision to come and get her in a airplane. They come and get her and they take her into the emergency room and she dies. Cause most of the people that get live flight die. So then you're not only uh warning your child's loss, you then get a bill of them in about thirty days for fifty three thousand. For some, that someone else killed your child, but you have to pay the bill because under Wyoming law, you're responsible for medical care to your children. So now you're going around your house, what am I gonna do with this bill? And your insurance covers it maybe for, if you've got really good insurance, might cover twelve thousand. And they're relentless and they threaten to sue you and they come after you and they don't give up. So it is, it is an interesting thing that's happening with this live flight. Cause when I was on the hospital board, we had live flight and the hospital was losing more money on the live flight than we do on the event center. And so that's why they contracted it out. And now these huge bills are hitting people and it's it's really a horrible thing to be in a situation where you owe a huge, huge bill. You did nothing. Your person was innocent and now you're saddled with the bill because the person who killed you in the deal had twenty five thousand dollars of insurance. So it's 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 a bad thing for our society and the more aware they become maybe the better off we'll be. I don't know.
So could you answer Councilman Morgan's?
Yes.
He's confused on the sense of, because if, because if it wouldn't make any point to bring them in if we can't use it, I think that's Jesse's trying to make that.
Right. And excuse me, uh if 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 I made a a a confusing by referencing that the National League of Cities was outside the state of Wyoming and had no association with that. There was a purpose in that, but it's not because they're inside or outside the state, it's because you are constrained by the constitution. The National League of Cities isn't. If they want to come in and offer this to satisfy Mr. Alar's concerns about giving good value to someone, they can come in and do it, but they can't do it using our logo, our good name, our goodwill, uh our money, our stationery, our letterhead, our logos. That's just wrong, it seems to us in the city attorney's office.
Thank you.
Does that help, Jesse?
Yeah.
So so point is, I guess, having them come in, having John come in and speak to this, is it worth our while to have them talk about it? Or is it gonna be a point where they have, they have to use our name? At that point, it's a point if they're gonna be utilizing our name, they're gonna be coming in and doing that, I guess. Chris?
Well, I read between the lines, entertaining the conversation, one company is in essence doing exactly what we're not supposed to do.
Well, I, you know, I can, I I think you are giving some value if you just give them a a place of to come advertise their services. I mean, some people would say, well, that's kind of a fine line. But again, you know, how much time do we spend here? How many people watch this? Is it gonna be in the news? It's gonna be on the front page of the Casper Star. Is it gonna be on YouTube for five years, ten years, twenty years? I don't know.
So with that, there's nothing wrong with discussing the expenses incurred with live flight if we did that um at the end of a council meeting.
It's a good information for your own.
It is. And you're certainly an expert on it, more more so than I am, but we could bring that to people's attention without bringing in a company that offers some relief to that. And I don't see where we would be running afoul of anything.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think there's only one outfit around them that's, I think it's Airmade's or whatever their name is. Now, that's that's offering anything in this area. Uh I I just can't see where it would hurt anything to uh let them come in and make their presentation. Uh who knows, they might have a special rabbit to pull out of their hat that says, oh, no, you can do this and it'd be a great deal for everybody. Uh I'm not not average to listen to them, but uh but I really don't want to get into that we're gonna endorse it and 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 that stuff.
I don't think you've dealt with very many insurance companies. Pigs will fly when it's a good deal.
I just wanted to quickly ask, um, you know, with that being said, does our city attorney find it to be a good idea to have the service on warranty company um come and present to us for information and also live flight, for example? Is that a good idea?
I would take it, no, because we're giving them a broadcast meeting. We are basically just probably listening to them, letting them advertise their service. And if you think about product placement movies, how much do companies do that? Have the can of PepsiCo sitting on the table during a movie shot?
Right.
And so it's the same, it's the same considerations. I think you might say, well, it's not a huge monetary now. But again, is that the appropriate thing to do under the statute, under the constitution? So there's um, there's a separation there and that's just a question.
They can come down to my office and explain it to me and then I'll tell the city of Casper what happened. So they'll know whether it's a good deal or not. I'd be happy to do that, free.
That being said, I I'm against entertaining anybody presenting to us on July tenth, that we discussed earlier.
Okay. So I just need to see a thumbs of who's.
I just want him through the information, but I really don't want him here.
That's called putting down the shovel. We stopped digging.
Stop digging all.
He was very convincing today. Good job, Chris.
So, Mr. Mayor, a couple of the questions, um if I may, all along the context of agenda review. You you will notice on the upcoming work session agenda items, just a few under live flight service insurance, which at this point is being stricken. The, an entry called CATC public hearing. What I would recommend for that um is more so than a public hearing at this point, rather a work session wherein we can go into detail with regard to the route consolidations and modifications that we would suggest by way of um continuing that conversation regarding CATC and the possibilities for, you know, potentially saving the general fund some money. Instead of jumping directly into a public hearing forum at this point in time.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, agreed.
Very good then. We'll go that route and hopefully get some.
I'm fine with that. I did, but I did, I went and took a bus ride with the channel thirteen guy. And listened to why these people use our bus and after I did all that, I don't want to cut any money off of them, Carter, I want to give them more money. Cause it's it's a lifeline for them. One lady had the, had the camera guy in tears. He says, well, she's a little elderly lady, couldn't hardly get around herself. Got up into the bus, sat down, so he starts asking her what she was doing. She says, well, she says, I have a friend who who was a little lady and she can't get out of her house because she has cancer in her eyes and I'm writing, I'm going up to Walmart to get a medication. And if I didn't have this bus, we couldn't do that. And and then all these people started talking and I tell you what, it was a, it was an interesting ride to see certain citizens of our town who think that that is, that is a lifeline for their survival.
Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Council, I will take that example and follow it myself and ride the the bus, albeit without the news folks with me. I'll probably just go on my own.
Think it'd be an excellent.
Do a ride, yeah.
I do see though, and I ask the bus drivers, cause I do see some things that they do that could possibly be streamlined. And even some of the people that ride the bus says the line that goes out to Paradise Valley. This one lady rides it all the time and says that she could see some things about streamlining, which I thought was interesting.
Thank you.
Because it took too long and and what happens, they get, they get trapped on the bus for an hour and a half and that's too long for them and they have to go to the bathroom. You know, the only place they can go to the bathroom is down at the library. So they're all, they they get down and they say, oh, God, you know, coming down from when they go to Paradise Valley and the different stops they make. And when you hear these things, it's just stuff we don't have to deal with.
Yeah.
You got your license and your car and all that money. These are people that, this is, this is a life and death situation for them. It really is.
And that work session will give us an opportunity to speak about all that.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Streamlining.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, may I, Mr. Mayor?
You bet.
Can we be sure that there is some information given to us about those less utilized portions of the route? Because we have the data on how often the route itself is being used, but there are certain sections of the routes that we're considering some changes for and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see that impact.
Whether it's in there or not, we will darn sure make it abundantly clear. And and the idea is streamlining. That's that's exactly what we're trying.
And Mr. Manager, those bus drivers are fantastic.
I believe it.
Cause I agree with everything that Dallas says, but I don't see how it helps the elderly elderly or the disabled. And there's an empty bus repeatedly covering a route, a section of the route that isn't being utilized.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. And the only other thing I have by way of agenda review um is with regard to a question along the lines of the weed and pest discussion that has also come before you lately. Um, the the question that that remains in my mind really is is more along the lines of whether or not you would like further discussion to talk about that position continuing through the one percent program. That 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 really is the only thing that I haven't necessarily gotten real clear direction and if we need more discussion, we can put that on the grid and make that happen, but they are getting to a point where they really need to know if indeed that is an option that this body would consider.
So that was when we moved it out of general fund and we moved it to the one cent?
We just took it out of the.
That that's more of where we're at right now, where Council wants to describe.
So is that what we want to do? Is that where we're at or?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it would be beneficial, should number sixteen pass this year, to have council that next year decide um if that's a program that should be funded for one cent, but is that something we can do now or do you want to do that with a new council and?
That's a great question. I appreciate you bringing that clarification up. The 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 question really is whether or not on an interim basis, assuming one cent sixteen is something you'd like to see have happen with this particular position. Um be um whether or not on the interim basis, you'd like to consider one cent fifteen uh between now and the time that one cent sixteen actually kicks in. So that that, I appreciate that. That's an important question.
And Mr. Mayor and Carter, I have a similar question with reference to the seventy five hundred dollar general fund item for Kansarone Fire District, which I have mistakenly understood was still left in the uh the general fund budget, but where that is and what the status of that is now.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Mr. Mayor, did, ladies, did we, did we push that to one percent as well as a part of our recommendations? Um, okay, so that that is included in one cent, not general fund right now, right? Being.
Correct, but the applications, the applications have to go out and funding for that. And then Council will give a whole list of council terms on what they want to.
Are we talking for sixteen or for the interim period as well?
The interim period as well.
Okay, very good. Does that help, Councilman?
Okay, and you guys will be sending something out for.
If that they already filled one out, so that will move forward, but the the organized agencies, we still have to do.
Thank you.
Did you get a clear of what to do with the one cent with Master Carter?
Uh, not for the interim period. What did we, what, I'm not sure if that one.
I would just like to say I would support funding that through on the interim basis through one cent, not the general fund.
Revaluating it next year?
Yeah, well, to support it with number fifteen on the assumption or or hope that number sixteen one cent gets passed.
I'm good with that.
That's good.
Thank you. I appreciate that direction. And that's all I have for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. Charlie, he has some updates for WAM.
Well, there's there's two things I would like to talk about. Um, and I have not spent a lot of time with this section of the agenda for the past several work sessions, but I would like to talk about the resolutions that WAM has adopted. But also talk about some of the things that are going on in the legislative interim committees. The total amount of time is probably the twenty minutes plus. And I would like for this, the review of the resolutions to take place at a later work session, but not at the bottom of the agenda as it always is when people are tired and want to go home.
Hmm, that's good.
So.
Do we have the resolutions, Charlie?
You have, you have copies. We're supporting, discuss to discuss with you all some of the things that led up to that and to their purpose.
So Charlie, you you'd want us to be able to put that at the top, maybe just have the discussion first?
Earlier, yes.
Okay.
Cause I will briefly give you just a real quick update on some of the things going on around the state. As you all know, the interim committees are where the action is because the interim committees basically work to develop legislation that comes before the legislature in the next session. And when a piece of legislation is is approved by an interim committee, it it is, it's greased. There's a lot of momentum behind it. And so what goes on between the sessions is critical. And so WAM is constantly testifying in these interim commissions, committee committee meetings regarding the impact of these proposed legislative uh these ideas that legislatures are considering in their committees. And so I'm just gonna briefly go over this and we'll call it good for tonight. The uh the exec, the, excuse me, the interim, the travel recreation committee um is talking about taxing bike trails. Interesting concept and and of course the municipalities now say, wait a minute, we've got systems within our cities that our taxpayers have paid for. Are you gonna try and tax those as well? Uh but I think the thinking is we tax people to ride the roads, why don't we tax people to ride the bikes? So uh you saw some of some of that. Um, there, Wyoming used to have a, an incentive program to get movie companies to come and shoot movies in Wyoming. And that was disbanded. And so you'll see things like Longmire that's filmed in New Mexico now because all the, this is a competitive deal and and a significant source of revenue that Wyoming is no longer accessing because we don't promote it. And so there's some discussion of trying to get that program back in place. Uh joint corporations met and they talked about the Endow recommendation that companies have free electricity. Uh and that that could be an economic stimulus. Um, there was a lot of discussion about broadband and how do we get broadband spread throughout the state? Uh, obviously another economic development initiative. Uh, there are some major changes to election laws being considered that really have to do with reporting requirements for those who are running for office. And you're all, you are, those of you who are running this fall already have some new reporting requirements that weren't in place before. They talked at length about the stormwater surface drainage. And um and I'll get to a resolution that WAM passed on that when we go through that. But um there there was a lot of interest in this and a lot of uh support for allowing municipalities to establish a uh a utility. This whole community development districts is not going away and this is something I told you guys about. It had to do with a Cheyenne initiative to basically take a section of the city and have it, have it, have it run under a different set of rules and a different uh property collection, property tax collection basis so that they would be more more responsible for providing their own services and also have some revenue sources within that community development district. And uh it's just, it's just a very complex proposal that uh there's a lot of push now to allow this. And developers are interested in whether we do this and if it does pass, I could see this happening in Casper very easily. Where a developer would want to develop, would want to create one of these community development districts. And so I'll just have more of that, more information on that later. Um, let's see, the joint corporations also talked about public records. And as you all know, we're required to publish certain things in the newspapers, very expensive. And uh the Wyoming Press Association, of course, wants that requirement. It's a good revenue source for them. And uh but there are questions as to whether in today's environment, is that really necessary? Just given all of the other ways that people can learn about what was on in. Given all of the other ways that people can learn about what goes on in our meetings and when we meet. And so there's a lot of push-pull on that going on right now. Access to public records, big issue. You've all been reading about it. The Wyoming Liberty Group made a strong point that Wyoming lacks transparency. People can't get access to state records easily. And they impose, of course, fees that state agencies have been assessing. And there's a lot of tension going on about the open records statutes and whether municipalities now should be held to some of the same standards that state agencies are as far as access to records. Minerals Committee. There's a blockchain task force. Wyoming is, I believe, the first state now that has statutes in place for blockchain.
AKA money laundering.
They have, they have seen, and there have been numerous entities that have now registered for the state of Wyoming because of that statute. And there are ten different types of coins that are being created through this process. And then the big question is, are we going to be required to accept that for when people want to pay their water bills? And that's, these are some unanswered questions.
Are you using bitcoins?
Yeah. So.
They'll trick bitcoin Wyoming.
Fortunately, that's a long way down the pike.
Not so far.
So. Make us take that. And I'll just say, I have two other things. I'm going, I hope to attend a tour that the Northeast Group Region has been sponsoring for many years where they bring the staffers out from DC who have been indoctrinated into believing that all energy extraction is an environmental disaster and that everything that's done out west is done without concern for the environment. And they bring these staffers out and they give them tours of the coal companies. And they show them areas where coal has been mined and the land has been reclaimed. And you can't tell the difference. And they show them how they transport coal and spray the top of these coal plants so that there is no dust that goes anywhere despite what they've been told by DC. And I don't know if we're involved in these, Carter, but, and I'm, I'm going to attend this. I've been invited to by Bruce Jones and any of you can as well. I'll give you the dates. But it basically is a tour where they take these people around and they can't come back twice. So there are different staffers that are brought into this tour every year. And the idea, of course, is to show them the other part of the story as far as what really goes on out here. And that people are trying to do this in a responsible way. And when we do directional drilling, we can put down a pad and extract gas and oil from, you know, I don't know how far away, a long ways away because of the directional drilling process, things that they just don't know. So that's going on. The Leadership Training Institute, if you remember, we kind of gave some money back to them that was held in a, in a trust, I think it was, or a, I don't know if you can see it was. And they are creating some training videos for municipal, for people like us. So here's what the open meetings law says. Here's what, what, here's current thinking on ethical standards for people in offices like this. And so these videos are a way for people to gain access to some of this stuff without necessarily going to a WAM convention. So they're working hard on that. Uh, let's see, what else was there? Just one other thing I was going to tell you. Oh, I guess I want to tell you just first, just one of the benefits of going to Pinedale is I got to go on a tour of a guest drilling rig. And that was really cool. If you ever have a chance to do that, if you haven't, to see just how, how involved this is. I mean, these guys are pretty impressive in terms of what they do and the complexity of machinery they run. And just seeing this thing in operation was, it was something else. And I think it's critical for us, here we are pushing buttons and spending money and to learn where that stuff, where the money comes from. And I watched it come right out of the ground. And so, or I got to pay, so I watched the hole get drilled. But it costs three million dollars to punch a hole, start to finish. Depending on how deep they go. Yeah, and I'm sure there's a lot of big variation in it, but if you ever get a chance, do it. So I'll do the resolutions next time or whenever we can put it in the agenda, but I'd rather not do it at six forty-five.
All right. Anything to share, Chris?
Well, clearly we've all had a lot of stuff on that code for the maintenance. And is that copy going to be, a hard copy going to be available for people?
We're going to need a hard.
You bet. I bought one, so I've got it. I'll just recommend reading it and going through and educating yourself on what it says. Still got the questions on the step increases and, you know, we didn't pass any step increases. We passed money for longevity pay. You know, in the past, so there was an immediate step you had to take in order to stop a lot of the money flow. A lot of times when those things come about in the past, it's, this doesn't apply to new employees or to current employees. It applies to new employees. What impact would there, I guess you don't know the answer off the top of your head. But if we put those steps in place for people that had been employed prior to that, what would that do to us? It's gonna, it would be, you know, an ending thing, no longer than five years, particularly if somebody had just started. And the argument on step increases is why do I get paid for staying one more year? And I'll give you a counterargument from a perspective of a person applying for the job. When you apply for the job, it was never a maybe. There was never a perception that this might happen. It was, you will start at this and in five years you will end at that. So in essence, I see it as we made a handshake agreement with an employee, and I was one of them, that you're going to make this much money. Probably the idea in between initially was that it was kind of a vetting process, a probationary process. And as, as you go, you would actually get to the pay that we're going to pay you to do that job, but you're going to start out lower. And I know there's the, well, you shouldn't get paid for one more year just for breathing. Agreed, unless that come to you for a job and you say, here's how it works. In five years you get to here. Then there's a different perception when you're on the employee's side of it. And then in my opinion, you shake a man's hand, you say, we're going to give you this much in five years, follow through with it. Now, we, we obviously got issues on having money to make it right with the existing people that were in place before that happened. And then go to a narrative incentive pay. However, that might work, I don't know. I would like to know what the impact would be to it. We broke a promise. And I know, read the fine print, I've hired people through this city, the police department and all that. But every once in a while I bring them in and say, what I would say is, here's the pay scale. This is how it works. It wasn't. Now, keep in mind, the fine print here is this is subject to approval because it wasn't that way for at least twenty-five years. I started in nineteen ninety and then fourteen, and that never occurred. And we went through some rough times. And you brought us through some rough times. I'm just wondering what the impact would be if we did that for those people then. And then do the incentive pay. The incentive pay concerns me a little bit just because it's easy to give incentive. It's hard to pull it back when they stop as a manager. An effective way of measuring performance is critical on that. So is that something that requires more than just me asking or is it?
We can provide that data, absolutely.
Okay.
You bet.
Thanks, Chris. Mike?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of comments about the building code thing. I'm sure we've all gotten the same vitriolic, love-filled emails about that. Much of which I think is based on sensationalism and probably some misinformation that's out there. And so my first question is, is that actual code available anywhere online where you can look at it and where people can look at it and read it? I haven't been able to find it.
I can, I can answer.
Crazy email.
It's available online right there, but if you want to download it and print it, you got to pay fifty bucks.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll look at that. But I mean, if, if we could, you know, maybe encourage people to look, look at that actually because, but, but, you know, there's another, there are two other aspects that I'd like to talk about with everybody for just a minute here. One is that, you know, when I came on the city council and I suspect and hope that all of the same, the rest of you felt the same way. The first thing that we owe is a fiduciary obligation to the city and to the people of the city to, you know, first do no harm and to next do things that are good for the city and good for the community. Having that in mind, it is very difficult for me to reconcile the fact that the city has for so many years enforced what I would call the weed ordinance where we worry about if somebody mows their lawn. But now we're not going to worry about whether they have an inhabitable, a safe habitable structure there that they're living in. And, you know, my feeling almost is that, well, okay, if we want to say that anything goes and there are no restrictions on, you know, whether a structure has to be safe and habitable for people to live in it, then I think we also need to get out of the business of telling people how long their grass can be in that. Because to me.
We're not doing that, are we?
Oh, yes, we are. Oh, yeah, eight inches.
No dandelions, we have that in our ordinance.
Yeah, uh-huh. Oh, yeah. And not only that.
I mean, we're not, we're not without a code, is what I'm saying.
Well, no, but.
We're not saying we're not going to.
We're not throwing out all the building code. But, you know, really the focus of the, you know, of these changes to me seem to be to make the, you know, to assure that our people are living in safe, habitable structures. And as I said, my reading of it was just to bring it up to the standard of what the Wyoming landlord-tenant law basically requires. And I'm just really troubled that do we want to be a community where we could, where we worry and we bring the full muscle of the city to bear on somebody that has some weeds growing on their vacant lot or doesn't mow their lawn just right or dandelions or whatever? But, oh, you know, you can go ahead and have these, have structures and things, you know, have people living in hovels that might not be up to any kind of a habitable standard. That is really troubling to me. Having said all that, I think, you know, I think it's fairly evident that there is a big groundswell of opposition to this. And, you know, at some point we do have to, you know, we do have to kind of bow to the will of the people. And I certainly accept that and I'm, you know, really sensitive to that. But I am just deeply troubled and I'm really questioning whether or not we are living up to our fiduciary obligation to the city and to the people of Casper and to the betterment of our community if we don't step forward on some of these things like this. And especially in light of the fact that we worry so much about weeds and dandelions and the length of your grass and that kind of thing.
In regards to the code, I don't think anybody here is against looking at life safety measures. And I'm not either. But to criminalize somebody for not having a covering over their basement window or having chipped paint on their house is ridiculous. So I am not in favor of adopting the entire code as this stands now. Pieces of it, yes. I can, I can understand pieces of it. But I don't think we are doing a disservice to the city, the citizens of Casper. But we are, if you want to make criminals where there shouldn't be criminals and create law where there shouldn't be law. And I think that's, that's a common theme in this country. I mean, we, we have four and a half percent of the world's population, but twenty-two percent of the world's prisoners. Is it because we're a nation of criminals?
Because we consume fifty percent of pharmaceuticals in the nation.
Yeah, I mean.
In the world.
There, we create law where there shouldn't be law and make criminals where there shouldn't be criminals. And this is one example. Parking enforcement, in my opinion, is another example. It's a tax and punish, tax and punish system that doesn't work. We have an eightieth percentile recidivism rate of criminals in this country. It doesn't work, obviously. So we really need to look at alternatives. If the city staff wants to come and take out pieces of that code and say, here's where we want to focus on. This is why we wanted you to adopt this code and then leave out the rest of the craziness, then that's fine. But I'm not going to vote to criminalize chipped paint on somebody's house.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know, I wish Councilman Hopkins was here because he doesn't have what's known as the Facebook.
Neither do I.
You know, I post things after every meeting, so none, nothing has changed in that regard. It could be the most mundane update that somebody sees, but I think it's our duty to inform our citizens on what we're doing here. And that's what I did last week. And I did it actually after the work session too. And I guess the only difference is it really grew up in Wyoming or Casper. It reached forty-nine thousand people and had over six hundred chairs and a whole bunch of.
Advertise on your Facebook page.
I didn't boost it or anything. It was nuts. But that being said, you know, I, I'll try to convince you in a council meeting, but I will not try to backdoor votes or anything like that from you. I'll leave that up to, you know, the greater, or the city of Casper. I'll leave it up to them to reach out to you. I'll try to make my case if I'm voting for something or in opposition of that. So I hope you don't see it as me trying to, you know, create unnecessary uproar in the community or anything like that. I'm simply informing people of what's taking place in our meetings and I think that's important for everybody. And a lot of people that follow the page or reach out to me, they respect that too. So I just hope it's not just trying to attack you guys or anything like that. You can go back, I don't know how many ever meetings that we've had and I've given an update after every one. That being said, you know, I do support some of the life-saving goals and some of the restrictions or I guess lack of tools that we have of trying to tackle some of the issues where we have a tenant that's in a unsafe condition and a landlord that's unwilling to spend any money to try to get their, their building up to code or up to, I guess, an inhabitable space for them. So that's really all I have to say on that. With the code, there's been some good conversation though on what contractors see and where we're going. I know it's on the upcoming agenda for soil compaction, for example, there's some concern there. And I kind of hear it even at the last meeting where we hear people say, well, you know, the, the building inspector isn't there on time or, you know, hey, we have this project open, we need them to see it and we're not seeing it. So I'm just curious, is there staffing level there that kind of seems to be the, I guess, the most prominent concern when it comes to enacting anything or having an inspector there? They don't want to keep an open hole, for example, for the soil compaction, to have them see this portion of the foundation there. And I think if we're providing a service for the citizens of Casper, we should make sure we can meet that demand. So I'm just curious to know, how is that part of the department? And is there any need to upkeep or I guess increase employees in that area? Even on a seasonal basis?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, certainly that ability to respond kind of ebbs and flows with regard to the degree of development and construction that's going on. I know some portions of a state and at certain periods of time in our evolution, history, if you will, things are booming and going crazy and despite our best attempts at not only trying to respond but having staff on hand to get around everywhere can be a real challenge. I would say right now, we are not having a hard time being responsive, in my opinion. I would be interested in seeing what contractors have to say in that regard. But the hunch that I have is that when we are called for inspections, we get there pretty, pretty readily. I do agree though that I'd like to see some metrics in that regard. Um, I, I do agree though that I'd like to see some metrics in that regard to, to measure what our response time is, much like PD does or fire department does or whatever. That would help me feel more comfortable that that was happening in a, in a, in a very measurable way. But, uh, my hunch is that, yeah, I think we are being responsive, but I can't say that when things are exploding that we aren't having a hard time getting around.
Right, okay. That helps me at least having that conversation and when they're voicing that concern, I can tell them that. And also staying on the property maintenance code and, and weeds and things like that. You know, it would be interesting to know why we would have to have a zero scape plan in place for somebody to just completely zero scape. I've been con- contacting some other people, try to find a solution to help, you know, your neighbor. And then so somebody kicked out the idea, well, let's zero scape the, uh, their yard, okay, looked at that. We have to have a plan if it's going to be sixty percent or more of their yard in order for that to take place. And when we're talking about people that aren't mowing their lawn, they're not, you know, taking care of their weeds, not spraying them, they're not watering it. At that point, I think it only makes sense to, to just zero scape it. Obviously, the, the eighty-year-old person on oxygen isn't able to take care of their lawn and have a tough enough time taking care of themselves, so it, maybe changing that in the ordinance makes sense to me, but listening to staff, I would have to know, you know, the other perspective to that, I guess, or more information, so if that would be possible, I would appreciate it. Um, and the next thing, I'm going to Riverton and I was just curious to know if s- council's comfortable with me going there as a councilman or should I go as a private citizen and leave out my name badge? It's, um, it's going to speak in front of the opioid task force July ninth during the public comment section about the, um, away out program. Just write down, uh, Senator Biebel is providing funding, um, state funding or grants to help people that are struggling with opioids. Um, so I was just planning on going and then talking to them about, you know, the other drugs, alcoholism, um.
July ninth, is it?
Meth, coke, whatever they're on, uh, you know, just to see if that can be extended to those other areas. Then if by chance council or management staff and everybody else feels comfortable adopting a way out program, uh, Central Wyoming Counseling Center that already receives funding from the state to tackle opioids, hopefully receive funding for those other avenues that I mentioned, uh, to make it easier to implement that program.
You said the ninth?
The ninth, July ninth.
I would be interested in going with you.
Yeah.
I, I might be interested in going over there too.
To Riverton and I'll, I'll send you, uh, the agenda. Send you guys the agenda.
Go ahead, Chris. I'm not comfortable with you, any of you representing council as a whole body on the way out program. I don't think there's aspects of it that are feasible.
Okay.
So I guess when I say council, I say me, but how's everybody else feel, I guess?
I think if he goes as, as a council man.
Well, but you go there and you say, I'm Jesse Morgan, I happen to be on the city council, I also lived there and was born and raised there and I'm here as a human being, I mean.
Right. There's nothing wrong with that, it's not, it's a.
That's all I think.
Not because the city council believes this.
And, 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 not, not, not only, not only on this, but I think this is a general proposition unless the council adopts a resolution directing Dallas or Charlie or somebody to go and represent this.
Represent.
I, but, but yeah, just to go and, uh, you know, like, like you say, as a citizen and whatnot, I'd, I'd probably be interested in going over.
Me too.
And I'm, I'm fine with you wearing the badge too, for all those reasons.
Yeah.
You wear a driver's license on your forehead if you want. If you are, you can do what you do.
Gotcha.
Anything else, Jesse?
Um, I, I keep getting some complaints every now and again, I just wanted to bring that to council's attention. Um, since we do control, I guess, the contractor perhaps, I'm not sure how that's structured, but anyway, the management of the municipal golf course and how that's being managed, so I've been getting complaints about that. And so I just wanted to bring that to you guys' um, attention, maybe we could look into it. It's also the men's league, just that it's kind of hostile towards the people that are part of men's league and trying to, to finish, if they don't finish links in two and a half hours, they'll get.
Well, they should finish in two hours, or they should get kicked off the course.
Kicked out or. It's men's league, you're there for a good time.
No, you're not. You gotta be done in four hours or you should get off the course. And they have, they have, they, they, it's true, they have, they're giving them five hours, they're giving them an over, they're giving them an overkill.
And it's a crime ordinance, you're putting them in jail for it. Criminalized golf.
Let's tax them for any time over.
They have marshals, they have golf marshals on every golf course and you should be able to finish, if you can't finish in five hours, go play another game.
We just found Dallas's passion.
Nobody wants to be stacked up. I'll get her husband out there, he's three hundred and fifty times, if you're, if you're over four hours, I'll throw your off, you and your golf cart off the course. So tell them to quit, quit bitching about that, learn how to play better golf.
I'm gonna stand a third hole for eight hours.
If you didn't finish, they go to Douglas, they're muted and how, um, that's managed, maybe you can get another idea of perception.
Have them call me. I'll handle your complaints.
Yeah. That was it.
Dallas, do you have anything else besides golf?
They have a, they have a, they have a course that I played on Paul Springs, they have a clock. Uh, every, about every three holes and if you're behind on that, they said if you're behind twice on these clocks, a marshal's gonna come out and you can go get in your car and go home. They don't want anybody playing late there. Because you'll have about, the other hundred people that are on there will come and take you and your car and throw it off the property. The thing that we didn't address, that's a serious terrible problem that we need to somehow correct and it's the manager's serious terrible problem and Tom's serious terrible problem and it's straining our insurance out for our employees. That thing is getting worse by the, as the, as each second ticks. Everything you addressed, I agree with from the standpoint of a handshake, there ought to be honor and a handshake. But the problem we have is, we're in a boom and bust society and we're, we're, we have money trouble. And our people cannot understand when we make certain expenditures and then talk about money trouble. And it is hard to, to try to explain it, it sounds like some politician lawyer sweetville and around the deal. Uh, so I know, personally, I think our city is in good hands. I really do. I think sometimes we get a little too edgy with punitive sort of ways of handling things. And I don't like that and our people don't like that. I don't want to see some, I don't wanna see a problem with this building code with somebody calling me and says, well, you know, if they're gonna make a ordinance against rusting, then we gotta go down, down and tear the, uh,
Take the station down.
Tear the station down at Patterson Plaza. That's how the guy said it. That's what he called it. So, uh, I'm going, well, so I went and read it. Now here's the prompt, Carter, we had a vote on this. We should've had all of these, each person should've had that code in a little book form like Henley has, it's really easy to open and read, you can't find it online. So, uh, we should've had that, we should've all had a chance to read it, we should've found out what the, the city attorney should've reviewed it, told us what the problem areas are because I think the, the punishment portions and giving some employee the possibility of going in your home without a warrant is a huge mistake. And that's what the people are mad about. I'm gonna vote against it until all that stuff's culled out of there. And I don't wanna get into a meeting and I'm telling you right now, doing what we did with the food truck. Where somebody's making amendments and amendments get screwed up and nobody knows, let's get the amendments in writing, let's get this thing done right and not beat ourselves up in front of the public. I just don't wanna go through it again. I'll go through if it has to be gone through and the same thing's gonna be with that traffic study. Because these people are gonna get little snippets of it and all this stuff and they're not gonna read that, Mike, they're just not gonna read, they're not, give it to them, they're not gonna read it. Now, he puts it on Facebook, I'm good with him putting it on Facebook. I mean, it flushes out stuff. Anybody gets mad at him for putting it on Facebook, that's their problem. Because the public sees certain things and yeah, I'm getting a lot of backlash from it, but if I could, if I can talk to him face to face, I, I could say, you know, look, I don't like the overreaching, I didn't know the overreaching was in there the other night. Cause I hadn't read that whole issue about how the code people can figure out a way to get into your house. I do not like that at all. And that, in my opinion, and the appeal rights, the way that appeal's set up, it's an appeal that is a rubber stamp situation. Those homeowners don't have a chance if they come in here and complain about some problem. I think we're too hard on them. And here's the other problem, they have money problems, we have money problems. We can't do all this stuff. They can't fix some of this stuff. Uh, it's just like the coverings over the windows. Well, I looked at that thing, I, I, I came down the street and all, and every house in my neighborhood, all the way downtown, into the downtown, nobody has any coverage. If you pass that, I want, I'm gonna quit that day and start me a window covering company, cause I'm gonna make a lot of money. I had a little chat with your mother about this, we're talking, what do we do about these window covers? Cause I don't have them on my office down there, I don't need them at my house. And you should, we, we can't be making people do that kind of thing in this city. It's ridiculous. So the, the people of Casper that sit there in their houses and read where they may have to do that and they go out and somebody says, yeah, to put window coverings on, your basement's gonna cost you eight hundred dollars and have them installed. People can't afford that. We have to live with our laws where our people can afford to do the things we request. And I don't think it's a matter of making them cut their weeds and then get rid of life-saving things, Mike, I just don't think we're gonna do that. I don't think that's, you know, that's a comparison in your own mind, I don't think that's ever gonna happen. And I, I think if we just live with our current building code, I don't think we'd have to do anything. And we've, 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 we've got the, the public in an uprising over there and there's some reasons, they should be upset. I would be upset. I just think we're getting too punitive around here, Carter, and I don't think we need to be. We don't need to be punishing people for every darn thing that they do. If you start, if you've got technology on those plates where they can see whose plate it is and all that, people will not come downtown. And one guy gets a hundred dollar parking ticket, people will say to hell with you, I'm gonna drive to Douglas. I'll go to Glen Rock. I'm not gonna come downtown and do that. I can now see what those old councilmen, why they took those parking meters out. Because I remember how they'd jam them and they wouldn't work and you wouldn't have to pay anything anyway, was the name.
Bob, we found out who was doing it.
I think it was him. Bob made it down. It's like how to, how to keep the pinball machine from tilting.
The, the, the eight hundred dollars to, to do that, I like, Sunday I was out at Menards, they're eighteen dollars apiece.
Yeah, but who puts them in for a little, little old lady that's eighty-five years old? Her? She's gonna get out there and do it?
They're eighteen dollars apiece and you just set them down on there.
And you don't think some contractor, you don't think, and then if they fit, the kind of, in my office, you can't get them like that. You can't get an eighteen dollar piece of plastic to go with that, they're gonna have to be made.
We'll have to tear your office down.
Thank you, tear my office down.
Yeah, or Chris, go ahead, you had one to say something. Criminalize and put them in jail.
Yeah, there's, there, uh, I think there's probably a shift in what people are thinking on that and there are a lot of codes right now. We've used them to shut down places that were dangerous. Maybe there needs to be some more, but, um, I don't know, might be worth it to take a vote, see if this thing's gonna pass and if it's not, why drag this out in front of the public and have code enforcement come in and say, we're lacking in these necessary areas and amend what we already have.
I think we oughta withdraw it and come back with the code, the city attorney, cause he's looked at it.
That's what I'm saying, can we do that? Well, well. And then is that, is that everybody's opinion here at the table?
I, I think, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for button in, but I think it, it, it passed on first reading. I think that the only way that it can now be quote withdrawn or anything else would be to amend the, uh,
Or fail it.
proposal that's there to delete that, to delete the, the residential part that everybody seems to be objecting to and, and that.
And then amend those.
And then come back and look at that, that later, because I, I, I don't think it can just be quote withdrawn.
Let me interrupt you now. I don't think that's a good idea. I think what we do is we withdraw that somehow. And Henley can go look, we withdraw that building code, headline will be building code withdrawn. Come back with another building code, reintroduce the new building code that everybody will love and you will do yourself a favor. You start amending that thing?
No, 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 huh, no, I, I probably didn't express myself really well there. For one thing, my understanding is that the IBC has to be renewed basically by July, uh, or we end up with no building code in, in effect. And, but the, I think that this residential part is what everybody's objecting to.
Probably maintenance code, yeah.
This, the, the whole package now stands having passed on first reading. So I don't think that you can just quote withdraw something that passed on, that's already passed on first reading, but what I think you can do
Make a motion to table it.
If someone can make it, no, well, somebody can make a motion to amend to delete the part that everybody's objecting to, to, to delete that whole section.
But there's another thing.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna stop everybody for a second, cause I'm gonna ask for a lawyer to weigh in on this.
John, and, and actually, uh, if, if you actually saw the packet, there were, uh, eight, I think, different amendments. So you can't actually go ahead and pass the ones that need to be passed, you can table and, and reject the property, you know, property maintenance code. Where you can table the property maintenance code for now and then bring it back into work session and we can work on it later, kind of like you, with the, uh, global.
So John, we can do that next week on our second reading, we can take it and we can say we are going to table section F of this until we can have discussion on the work session.
We're gonna, we're gonna table, uh, the, uh, the ordinance that deals with the property maintenance code.
Everything else can, can continue.
Chris, well, I don't know if table one's what we want, um, it's not what I want.
We'll table amendments, delete, kill.
Well, but I, I don't know if we can delete it if we just vote no on it and don't let it pass. I think there's so much of it that needs to be reconstructed. I mean, literally, if you want it to get, follow the law, my chimney and my barbecue grill are in violation. Cause it's emitting vapors into my neighbor's yard. So peel all that out. I don't know what part of the electrical code and the fire code is already covered by the electrical code and the fire code. Um, but what we need to do is start over. I would say let it fail, let the code enforcement people say, number one, something prompted this, we don't know what it is, what were those concerns, what needs to be addressed and what's lacking in our current law? Knock that whole thing out, rebuild small pieces of an existing ordinance that may have a shortcoming in it. We can do that, John. We can have it fail and then.
Sure, you can vote it down, vote it out.
You can, in fact, yeah, have it fail and then you can amend if you wanted to, uh, look at the building code and, and, and some parts of that.
And rebuild it, whatever we want to, okay?
So there's one thing I wanna call attention to. John, what was it, well, it's in one of the, uh, actual ordinances that you signed, which says that if I go and I say, uh, Chris, uh, you didn't, as of tomorrow, you need to fix your paint. And you take, you can't get a painter in there or you don't get to it for forty-five days, I can charge you for forty-five counts. Now, do we really wanna do that? Who dreamed that up? I mean, why is that in there?
Well, I think it's part of existing code violations that are in effect now.
I, I think it should be taken out of there. You, that, that's just, that's just horrible to do that.
So my question is that, and then Carter has something to say, my question is then, we have a lot of people that have signed up to speak and it's probably gonna be a very full gallery. Um, if we're gonna do this, do we mention this right away and say this is what the council has decided to do?
I think we.
I mean, or.
Definitely.
Go ahead, Kene, I'm sorry.
Yes, we should tell them at the very beginning that it's gonna fail so that they can go home and relax.
Well, I, I don't think we can.
Remember the last time you canceled one of these, it was at Donnybrook.
Yeah. Not cancel, just tell them.
I, I don't think we can.
I'm not gonna cancel, I'm gonna tell them that this is what the council has decided to do, if they wanna still come up and talk.
No. No, I, I don't think you can say that. Uh, and, and John, I, I think what you can say is there is an informal consensus on the council that, uh, that, that these parts of the, uh, uh, the code are gonna pass. This part is probably not going to pass because to say that we're gonna kill this, that implies that we've made some decision outside of an open council meeting and, and that, and I don't think you can do that. But I think in fairness to people that might be gonna be there, I think saying, you know, there is a very strong consensus on the council that this is not going to go forward after tonight, I think that would be a completely fair thing to say and, and save a lot of people a lot of aggravation.
I think you oughta have the public hearing. I don't think you oughta tamper with that. Let them get up there and puke all over the council and then make a vote.
Oh, I never said I was gonna tamper with the public hearing. I'll continue to have that public hearing. But what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to avoid an all-out massacre of people coming up here because of the emails that I've spent the last week responding to individually to assure them that this council's not trying to do government overreach, which is the narrative on social media.
I did the same thing. I sent all those emails.
Well, that's why it's voted in right now.
That's what's happening. I mean, it's not just a made up narrative, it's what's in color.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's made up, Sean, I'm saying that's the narrative on social media and that's what's happening. And so what's gonna happen, we have some very angry people. We have had people that have, we've had, we've had people that have, it's not funny. We've had people that have made threats and said things to us online about it.
I got a threat, I'm gonna show up to the gym.
Can I assist? I mean, it's, it's gotten way out of hand. And I think for something that could be easily remedied and handled this direction, this way, right here, like this, by saying, we've heard people were gonna do this, this has, this has gotten way out of control and it's unfortunate.
What happens, what Chris said, vote it down, let it start over.
Well, well, but, but I, I, what I'm saying is that I, I, I absolutely agree with everything that you're saying, Mr. Mayor. But, uh, I don't think that you can go in and announce that the council has decided.
Well, yeah, I agree.
Cause we're taking an improper action.
I think that what you can do, and I would look to Mr. Henley for confirmation on this. I think you can go in and say, now, before we start this discussion, in all, in fairness to all of you folks who are here, you know, wanting to talk about this stuff, on either side of this, there is a very strong consensus on the council that this part of this thing is not gonna pass tonight. And it's not gonna go forward tonight. But, you know, no final decision has been made yet because I don't think we can make a final announcement, a final decision.
They will not buy that unless they see that thing.
We're gonna have to go in and let them issue some shit all over the place.
I think you just go out and have everybody vote.
We, we make informal decisions all the time at every public work session. So can we do it right now? Who's in favor of voting against the international maintenance code? Did I give you?
How many? How many?
It was five right, it was five right there.
You know, you all, you all have been talking about this for quite a while. May I say something? Just, you know, just taking my turn. I think we're forgetting something important here is that this came to us as a staff recommendation from the people who are doing the work every day of trying to take care of the more vulnerable members of our population. And I, what I said to people, cause I responded to all those emails too. And some of them were vitriolic and sensational, but the replies were respectful. I appreciated that. But what I said to them is this, we had a five-four vote. The four people who spoke against it were very passionate about why this was a bad thing for the city. That's not unimportant. And we got all these emails. I think some of them were, uh, focusing on things that were not really the intent. But they were all negative. And I said, what we should do is step back, table this thing. Give staff a chance to tell us why they recommended this, why they think there were sections of this code that they needed to have in place to take care of people. It's interesting how people focus on different parts of it. I was focusing on egress and is department heated? And other people were focusing on chip paint and some of these other things that are, you know, the examples of overreach. But I think we should give our staff an opportunity to say, these, this is why we think these tools are needed. And then go ahead and take out the sections that we don't want. So my, I would like to see us just table it to a date certain. Because if we eliminate the entire code, we may in fact be preventing our staff from being able to take care of some things that they feel very strongly they need to take care of. And we haven't given them a chance to tell us that. And that should happen in a work session. And if they can't convince us, we scrap the whole thing. But we give them a chance to convince us.
Charlie, that, that's fine. And I think everybody's in agreement on that. And honestly.
Well, not if we kill it now though.
Well, if you kill it, then you, you tell them what is it, what is it that you need out of this? But yes, there are, there are good things in there. And I, I don't think that the whole thing is bad. But there are things in there like you're barbecue emitting vapors in your neighbor's yard. I mean, is it a crime now? I mean, right, and that's what I'm saying. So yeah, we can, we bring city staff in here to, to show us what in there they need.
Exactly.
But honestly, I don't think without the social media uproar, this thing would have passed on first, second, and third reading, five to four. It wasn't until then that it made us and forced us to have this conversation.
I was actually thinking about tabling it after the vote, just because it was five-four. So, because we, and, and because I wanted to hear exactly what I just told you. I wanted to hear from staff. Prepared for the vote, Charlie. That's the thing that bothered me. I, I'm only speaking for me. I wasn't prepared to discuss what I later found out in there that I believe is a violation of people's rights. I don't, I don't care about the chip paint. I don't want some guy being able to say, well, I called around and they weren't there, so I went in their house. I'm good at talking about that too. So that, well, but I, I think, I think that I agree with what you say. I agree with what he says. Which is, you kill it, you tell the staff to bring you back something that can pass. That's what I think you should do.
Mr. Mayor, uh, part of why I voted with the five to pass it on the first reading was that I didn't wanna kill it because I thought that it needed further discussion and further, further clarification. And I thought it would be a mistake then to just kill it. I think it'd be a mistake now to just kill it. The more immediate question is, uh, in fairness to the public and in fairness to everybody that's involved, what is the best thing for the mayor to do? There seems to be a very, uh, to me, there's no doubt that this is, is not gonna pass on second reading next week. And, and that's okay. But, you know, what's the best direction that we can kinda suggest to the mayor? For how he can explain to the citizens that, look, it, there's a pretty strong consensus on the council that this is gonna be tabled or that it's at a minimum not gonna pass tonight. And so, there's not a big reason for having a huge bloodletting here over this. I.
You know, Mike, I disagree. I think we oughta let the bloodletting happen.
Or it doesn't matter.
I hear some more about it.
It doesn't matter. We can, what we can do is, is that we'll just let it ride, um, and not worry about, um, we'll do that. And, and when it comes to, to comments, then we will, um, have our opportunity during discussion just to, to, um, just kinda talk a little bit about it because I, I'm frankly, I just, I'm, while I, I certainly embrace social media, social media is also, I'm in many ways, and I say this to my children, is a scourge because what ends up happening, um, uh, online and on, on social media that not only do I, when I teach and I work with youth, is bullying ends up being the prime thing. And, and although I, while not the intent of everyone that is against this, um, was not the intent of everyone. And I agree with Charlie, a lot of the people that I responded to on both phone calls and texts and emails were very responsive and very respective of me. But the online bullying that did take place, um, to me individually and to other people on this council, um, uh, was, was what disappointed me. Uh, and people are gonna be loaded for bear to come to this meeting and, and just be so angry. And my hope is that they can understand that this council is trying to work to do what's in the best interest of the community and wasn't trying to create government overreach or doing any of those things. And, and that's my hope. We can let it ride. We can, we can let, let it happen. And I'm fine with that. I'm just was trying to mitigate the outrage that I feel swelling that's going to be there on Tuesday night.
Embrace the outrage, Mr. Mayor, because it's gonna happen. Everything you said was true. I had some of that stuff that I heard about what, about me as a lawyer and how I was gonna make all kinds of money over this. I just let it go because I'm used to it. I see it. I, 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 I've shut down other places that, that foster that kinda thing. I don't need to read it. You don't need to read it. It isn't gonna make any difference whether you read it or not. But just let them come and say their piece. Once they vomit it out, they're, they leave. And we'll do the right thing. And I, I agree. We have a good staff. We'll do the right thing. But I can tell you, the way, the way that we approach this, what I see, what gets us in the biggest trouble all the time is we do not handle our, our, our publicity right. And it's not because people, it, it, it's, it's not because people wanna say the wrong thing. We just have people that don't know how to speak about it. You know, it's like cats, even when you get up, I say, who does it affect? And they say, the elderly and the disabled. You know, that, it was true. But I think if I was going to put out a press release, I wouldn't say it that way. I would say, we are, we are streamlining this so we can give better service to all of our customers and we're not cutting any bus service to anybody. Now, that would've, that would've sailed by like a hot knife through butter. This building code will do the same thing. Kill the building code, come back with a new building code that we all understand that protects the rights of our citizens. And he can barbecue his deal. I don't have to put up my deals over my windows to keep rodents out. Cause what I do to keep rodents out, I shut the windows. Come on.
So, so really quick, so Charlie did have a, a proposal on the floor, on the table about wanting to table it? Is anybody in support of that? I guess I don't wanna ignore that. Does anybody wanna table it?
Don't you remember when I went through all the tabling? Nobody wanted to table anything. There was a good reason for that, Charlie. You were against tabling. You were against tabling. I think it's it. I think it's not a very good idea to table anything. Get it over with, vote it down, have them go get us one we can live with. That's what they do in Congress.
Oh, what I really worry about, and you know, we talked about the idea of these insurance companies coming in and giving them the bully pulpit to, to carry forth and advertise their positions and everything. There're gonna be a bunch of people that are gonna get up there and they're gonna say, and the police are coming in and arresting people and throwing little old ladies in jail because their paint's chipped and yada, da, 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 da. And I will guarantee you, and I would use stronger language than that if we were talking personally, that if any city official in this town started behaving and treating people that way, they would not be employed for very long. And I can just virtually promise anybody that that is just not gonna happen.
But they are gonna say it.
They're gonna say it. And then, everybody in town is gonna be sitting there saying, Chief McPeters is gonna be out there throwing you in jail if your paint's chipped. That is doing a gross disservice to the citizens to do that. And that's why I'm thinking that, uh, you know, it would be a very advisable thing to the people.
To curtail their freedom of speech.
No, huh, no.
Let them have their freedom of speech. Really?
No, Dallas.
They get freedom of speech, Mike.
The mayor can, can say, the consensus of the council is that this is not gonna pass tonight. That it's either gonna be tabled or that it's gonna be killed tonight. If any of you still wanna speak on this, you know, you've got the right to speak.
Put the vote first before they say anything. Take the vote, show them what we vote on, and then say, does anybody wanna comment?
I don't think that's fair.
I don't think we can do that.
I think the idea is that you get comment and, and maybe sway a vote before it goes down. I think if, if the mayor were to make that statement, everybody signed up to speak can speak. What if they know beforehand? I think it, it.
Well, they get to speak anyway.
They get to speak, but yeah, I'm just talking. Make them stop and speaking, but let them know that, that our intention is not to move forward with this. To relieve some of the rage that's out there. And they still, nobody's saying stop them from speaking.
Remember the LBGQ. Everybody thought it was gonna be horrible. It wasn't. And then we canceled the public hearing and the citizens figured out a way to get a public hearing anyway. And it all went beautifully.
You, you understand I'm not saying stop anyone from speaking. All I'm saying is if the mayor announces our position prior to, then when people are speaking, they're not speaking so much as to change our minds about passing this ordinance as expressed what their feelings are. It will, I think it'll change the, the atmosphere of.
Have the vote first.
Well, then why even have a public vote? Why, why ask the public anything if?
Then why, why say what Mike wants you to say? Because all it is is curtailing their, their First Amendment rights.
No one is saying that. You're making that up. No one is saying you can't speak publicly. What we're saying is it's the, you know, a consensus of the.
Tell them how we're gonna vote first, rather than showing them how we vote. I'm saying, show them how we vote rather than tell them how we're gonna vote. Then they know. Then they know we're not BSing with some lawyer language.
I think we've all expressed our opinions and so let's move on. I trust your judgment, Mr. Mayor, how to handle this.
I will. Thank you.
Perfect.
Good luck, Mr. Mayor.
We'll be, we'll be right behind you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be right behind you.
It's getting late. Let's start wrapping up, guys.
So, last comment then, I guess, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We stopped with the goal round right here. And I'm not done, but I'm gonna wait. I was gonna take Keneen's time, but I'm gonna be done anyway.
We have Charlie and myself still, so go ahead.
After all this, I apologize. I am going to miss next week. My son is coming in. I get to see him once a year and he's going to Denver, so. So if there was any doubt about how this vote was going to come out, we put that to rest.
Thanks, Charlie. Go ahead, Carter.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to talk further about life safety. And, and, uh, we will, uh, not be bringing forward light bulbs and window covers and.
Watertight windows.
The, the, the boogeyman about paint chipping and grills and stuff like that.
Getting rid, getting rid of the rusty building.
But I don't wanna live in a submarine. I don't need watertight windows.
We will be bringing forward life safety issues. And I thank you for that opportunity. Really, I appreciate that.
So, the only thing that I'll wrap up with, uh, tonight is, my hope is, is that, and I've been saying this everywhere I go, talking to young people, um, in every youth organization, and, um, we need to bring humanity and civility back to government. We need to be able to, to show that we can have passion and that we can have, um, um, the excitement about something that we believe in, but that we can do that with respect. And we can do that with understanding of other people's opinions. And I think that, um, this touched me more than I can, um, express in the last week of the things that I've read, the things that I saw, the things that were said, that were upset about council and how it spread like wildfire. And if there's anything that we can learn is we have to learn civility and humanity.
Well, you were non-civil. You were non-civil, were you, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, gosh, no.
Well, you're the only one who you can control on that.
Absolutely.
So you just gotta embrace it all. Just, you gotta.
But that's my, but that's our hope as leaders, Dallas, is that we try to work to do that. That's all. That's what I say.
And I think you're doing a fine job at it. And I think if you think you're gonna control the social media people and worry about all that. You'll be, I'm gonna be visiting you in the, in same order there.
Go ahead, Jesse.
So was the post, are you saying that was uncivil? I'd just like clarification on that.
Jesse, I wasn't even talking about your post.
I, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, God, no, I'm not even talking about your post.
And then post, and then if I could, I was gonna ask Mr. Henley a question and it might require this.
Go ahead, John.
No, I know, but it was just far as taking the.
Look, the, the one with free market statute, do we control the health department at all? I know we're funded, we're doing a health department, but how does that work? Do we have to change the code? Because there was a question or an email that came about where people aren't allowed to sell farmer's market type goods at a particular location, but statute kinda says something that might conflict with it, or at least that's how I'm understanding it cause I'm not familiar with, um, the statute personally. So if, uh, basically some guy goes, I wanna sell this jar of salsa at Sunrise Shopping Center at the parking lot, um, they get shut down to use. So, so I guess, could, is that okay if you looked into that or could I send you the email?
I'm behind Jesse. Look into it. I give Jesse a thumbs up.
I just didn't wanna do something you guys don't agree about, researching or something.
Are we done here?
I'll agree with you on that, Jesse. If you agree with me, the Facebook is a scourge.
Facebook is a scourge.
I will never embrace it. You don't have the people.
Yeah. Oh, Charlie, I need your signature.
They're good.
How you doing, Dennis?
It gets more interesting here every week.
Yes, sir.
The only time he could fly in.
Carter, I signed that. The supervisor's signature. Charlie, I need your signature.